And we have a full house, so I am going to call the July 8th, 2024 Select Board Meeting to order. First item on our agenda is public comment. It's limited to two minutes. What?
Follow the post.
Oh, okay. Does anybody with, anybody like to speak?
I went down to Juroe Park three weeks ago and...
Wait, wait, can people hear her? Just a second.
We're gonna have it turned up for you, Mary.
Yeah, the fan is loud.
Yeah, we'll shut that off.
It might just be the fan. Okay, go ahead.
Mary Weinberg, Hillside Avenue. I went down to Juroe Park three weeks ago, and forgive me, I'm not up with everything, and I thought, I was expecting something else, and when I, when I arrived, I was gonna draw with somebody else. I couldn't see the pond. This is what I drew. My, my half drawing. And this is, I drew a plan of what, what is there now. And you can't see the pond, because it's filled with trees, and there are new planting trees. So, they say, if you see something, say something. I'm saying something, because I can't see the pond. And what I noticed was, this is the walkway. Those of you, I hope everybody goes there. This is a rough idea of the walkway. This is the trees along the pond, and you can't see through it, and I thought the whole idea of having Juroe was to see the pond. Anyway, I'd like to see the pond. What I saw was, from here to here, all these new trees that have been put in in the last month. I don't know why, and I'm asking the town to take them out and give them over to the 250th Committee, reuse them, recycle them, because it opens up the whole vista. There are a lot of details, I'm not gonna go into it now. I'm, I'm just pointing that out. I'm pointing this out quickly here. The bathrooms are here. This is the pavilion. We were underneath the pavilion last week when it was very hot. It's cool underneath there. Before anything goes in that will have to come back, and you will say, why didn't you say something before? I'm saying it now. We'd like to have picnic tables underneath that, so we can go there, young people, old people, and sit underneath the pavilion, have a picnic, and eat. And that's why I came today. This is where the cars are. This is the design, roughly, of what it is. I'd love to ask everybody to go there. What I'm asking, two more quick things. There's a book called A Conscious Stillness: Following the Route of Thoreau That He Took in Navigation by Two Famous Naturalists. And they took the route, and it was produced by Harper &amp; Rowe. They have done many books. The great ponds of, of all this whole area, Warner's Pond is one of them. Not White Pond. Warner's Pond and Walton Pond is in the, the great ponds of this area. Last thing I'm going to do is ask, next Monday night, a week from today, which is July 15th, at 6:00 PM, I will be there, maybe alone, but anybody that wants to come, the password will be, "I want to see the pond." And I'll be there, underneath the pavilion, next to the bathrooms. And I hope everybody listening will send it out on their email, whatever, to gather there to walk through. The, that's at 6:00 PM, next Monday night, and the sun sets at 2:00 20 next week. The weather's gonna be okay. And they say that, I've never been there at sunset. They say it's a magnificent sunset. Okay, my, the producer's telling me to speed it up, so good night and thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Tanya Gales.
Yes, hi. Tanya Gales, 62 Prescott Road. Thank you, Mary. I'm just going to make a brief, gentle comment that is related to an agenda item, and Mary knows about it. It's not about the agenda, what you're going to be doing itself, but it's about the 250th Budget Discussion, and when I read their documents, I wanted to just mention a couple things, which is that, from the beginning, I would attend the Arts Subcommittee meetings, and the way it's structured is, organization, cultural organization representatives are invited to be members, and then invited to just submit their proposals and budget. And then they also are planning a few activities that invites the public. So, how, but it's very tricky and confusing to know how an outside artist or presenter can actually make a proposal. And there may also be conflict of interest issues for some of the presenters, but I'll leave that to others. What prompted me to come is a statement that they made, which is that they are asking Subcommittee representatives to speak with the local cultural council chair about possible support. And the local cultural council is one of the few committees where independent artists and others can go and make their presentation, or proposals, and get very, very modest awards, and still compete with large organizations for those very small awards. And it just seemed like, when the 250th cultural activities are organized in such an exclusive, more or less exclusive to the Subcommittee people's kind of manner, it seems kind of not appropriate to put Committee-initiated requests to the local cultural council chair to give priority to those projects, when it's the only place where independent artists can know, and they know the ropes, and they know it's a state program, et cetera. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know everyone is working with goodwill on this, so I'm not questioning anything. I'm just, it just prompted me to mention this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Good evening. Joe Palumbo, Nanny Blackhorse Place. I'm a member of the DEI Commission. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and some of the folks in the Pride Planning Commission. I just wanted to thank the Select Board in the last month for all the support you gave to the first-ever Concord Pride, both in the support of passing the proclamation and the support of the flag raising. It was really helpful and helped the event come off so well. Mary, your support, obviously, as the Chair, and your words that day were very impactful for folks, because we know that, we had over 200 people come to the actual flag raising. We know that the library that day said they have over 300 people come into their Maker Space, which was like a lot for them. And 600 individual people went and got their stamped at the library. So it was like a lot of people around. But I think the most important is how it made people feel that day, both for the LGBTQ+ IA community and their allies, to realize they were in a town and in a community that helped show them that they felt seen, and they felt safe, they felt respected, and in some places, they felt celebrated. And we know we're gonna make it bigger and better next year. And one thing I thought was interesting, the age group, and I know Mary may have seen it, they had like people under 1 to like 91 were there. And I had this gentleman come up to me, and he said, "I've lived in Concord since the late 50s, early 60s. I never imagined there'd be a day I could come and do this in my own town," which was very heartening. And then he said, "Are there gonna be more meetings like this?" So it kind of gave us a hint that we're gonna have to try to build some other events throughout the year. And so we appreciate that. And of course, there was a little bit of pushback in a few events during the whole month, but we always take, as you know, pushbacks as a sign of progress. So that just gives us more work to do as we work to help educate our community. And as my colleague Andrea said in her words, that was very impactful that day, about we wanna make everyone seem that you belong in Concord. And that's what we're gonna continue to try to do, all of us working together, to make Concord enter the progress in the 21st century as a place, and whether you work here, live here, go to school here, or visit here, you always feel welcome in an inclusive community. So thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. Anybody else? Anyone online?
Nope. See any hands.
Okay, good. Well, not good, but let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the, I wanna point out two things on the consent agenda. Under F3, that has changed from what you have in your hand. Andrea Fontarada is going to be appointed to the Concord Center Cultural, Local Cultural Council, not the Cultural District Task Force. So that was simply a typo. The task force's work is done, and the local cultural council's work continues. So that is the council that she's being appointed to. And the other thing, is, so is there anything on the consent agenda that people would like to pull out for further discussion?
I'll just make the comment that the June 17 minutes are still a work in progress. So we'll, we'll not be voting those minutes tonight.
Okay.
So, Mary?
Yes.
I had a question about the consent. I don't wanna change the vote, but I just wanted to talk about the town meeting calendar.
Go ahead.
It's just an observation, that it looks like we brought the, sorry, we're sharing. Does that work? Okay. Just a comment, I saw that we moved the public hearings back up to early April, and it looks like it's pretty close to when the town warrant actually gets mailed.
Yes.
We've got like about a week.
Yes.
So I guess my just request is that we make sure that the warrant is posted, and maybe we send a news and notices out that says, by the way, the warrant is being mailed, it's posted online, and maybe we can reference where people can see the budget materials for that first meeting, because it's only a week away, so it's just not giving people a lot of time.
That's a good point.
That's all.
Great. Andrea, can you capture that and make sure that happens? That would be great. Good. Yeah, good point. We did that because some of the hearings were bumping up too close to when we needed to make recommendations, and we didn't have any time for give and take. So it got confusing because of the 250th, and, but I think this is the best we can do.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of the June 17, 2024 minutes.
And the...
And the correction to, on this form, I saw Andrea Fontarada's appointment as noted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No, good. Okay, so we're on to Select Board appointments. Mark, you wanna do the honors?
Sure. I move to appoint the following candidates. Jill Block of 50 Everett Street to the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027. Dan Gainsborough of 12 Milran Lane, and Patrick McCurdy of 1100 Monument Street as co-chairs of the MCI Concord Advisory Board. Brian Waterson of the Town of Carlisle to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2025, as the Concord-Carlisle Regional School Representative. And I think that's, we'll do the other ones separately.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint town manager appointments. Brad Dye of 1019 Main Street to the Climate Action Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027. Catherine Hopkins of 444 Strawberry Hill Road to the Climate Action Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Town managers' report? Carrie.
Um, yes. Thank you. I'm gonna do that one today.
Okay.
I'd like to, thank you. I'm Chair. I'd like to encourage the public to take a look at our weekly operations report, which are found on our website. Review it at your convenience, but I do have a few items to highlight this evening. The Sustainability Roundtable met for the first time on July, on June 26. Sustainability Director Eric Sims led a group representing town departments, as well as representatives from boards and committees and members of the public. Concord has a long history of taking action on climate change, and while we've made positive progress, we know there's so much more to do, and we have to continue to do with these efforts. And the key to advancing these goals is the continued integration of sustainability across all sectors of town operations. So this group will meet regularly to receive updates on progress towards reaching sustainability goals, as well as to solicit ideas and feedback on strategic actions across operations. I also wanted to mention that the Main Street and Walden Street intersection improvements are scheduled to begin on July 10. This project is designed for better traffic speed management through the intersection and to improve pedestrian safety. The work will include drainage improvements, sidewalk and ADA ramp improvements, installation of bump outs and curbing, and pavement markings. And we sent out a news and notices about this project and another project today, so if people aren't subscribed, it's a really helpful tool to know what's going on, and that's a place that is on our webpage, on the front page too, so you can see what's happening. In recreation, White Pond is open as of June 17, seven days a week, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Summer Camp, Three Rivers is underway. The report includes some photos of the lifeguards and some campers who are enjoying their time. The BD Swim and Fitness Center hosted a June Pride Pool Party on the 23rd of June, and there were about 30 participants. And the Council on Aging recently had an ice cream social, and they had over 100 residents sign up and participate. A couple other items for you this evening. We've talked a few times about Juroe Park, and a presentation is underway and being prepared for the July 22 Select Board Meeting. A few updates that we received this morning are that the electrical work has been completed last week. The staining of the pavilion is complete. The sign and kiosk are scheduled to be installed this week, and the pavers are scheduled to be fixed next week as well. The, I wanted to thank the members of the public and, organized by Maynard Forbes, who organized picnic in the park last week for 4th of July. I heard it was a wonderful event, and I wanna thank my colleagues in police and fire, recreation, public health, and Concord Public Works, who did a lot of the preparation and permitted the event, and attend, some attended, and I think it was a good time had by all. My final update is regarding cell service. I wanted to share that we did receive several letters from the public regarding the news that we're planning to issue a request for proposals at the Umbrella Art Center. And many had concerns about the impact of radio frequency that would be emitted from the cellular equipment. And so I just, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the residents and the tenants of the Umbrella Art Center for writing to us with your concerns. Public comment and participation is critical in the decision-making process in Concord, and we hear the concerns that you're sharing regarding the level of electromagnetic radiation. So we are planning to work with our consultant to do what we can do, to conduct an independent test to measure the level of electromagnetic radiation, EMR, so that we can advise the butters and the public on the real-world impacts of such a facility. We are also planning to issue the RFP for the Umbrella next week in parallel. And I just wanted to share that, you know, this request for a proposal is a step that's needed to learn more about the details and the feasibility of a project at this location. Our RFP requires a proposer, proposer to outline how they plan to minimize the project's impact on the users of the building, as well as the neighborhood. And those elements are part of the evaluation criteria. So if a proposer moves forward, they would next move to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a waiver. The Zoning Board of Appeals would have a public hearing with the opportunity for formal public comment period on the specific project. And so really, just to kind of clarify where we are in this process, we're issuing this RFP to learn more about how a vendor could meet our criteria to improve cell service downtown in this location, and understand the details of what that potential project would look like. And to address a concern that was shared in several emails, I just wanted to say that because of our limited open space in this populated downtown area, there are no locations that would provide adequate coverage for the downtown area without violating at least one of the general requirements of the bylaw. So that we're, we're trying to solve this problem in the least impactful way, but I wanna recognize that I understand there are concerns from residents, and we're gonna try to find out as much information as possible to share. We also have a webpage dedicated to this issue. It's a little bit buried. We're trying to find a more prominent home for it, but if you go to the Town Managers' page, and then under Related Projects, you'll find the Wireless Coverage webpage. And we have frequently asked questions that will be updated regularly. These, this needs to be updated with some of the questions I received over the weekend, and so we'll have real-time information there. And if anyone has any additional questions or concerns, I'm happy to speak with them about it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Megan, that's fantastic that you're putting that webpage together. I think that's gonna be really helpful. And I just wanna clarify one other thing. We're also issuing RFP for the landfill, correct?
Right. Yes, we are. This is, in the sequencing, this one is first.
Oh, okay.
But we are moving forward on that one as well.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, Megan. That's a great update. There's one thing that I wanted to understand. Are you saying that a zoning board waiver would be required because we know it's within 300 feet of a butters? Or is the consultant gonna come and measure whether it is within 300 feet or not?
Nope. The consultant would be looking at measuring the, the term, I've been saying radio frequency, but electromagnetic radiation. So they're not measuring the, the distance.
Right. But I guess my question is, do we know if it's really, one of the emails said, do we know if it's really within 300 feet or not?
There are a few different areas of, um...
Right.
I don't have the zoning in front of me, but they would likely, a project would likely have to request a waiver at, at this location.
For that reason.
For the proximity to residential.
Okay.
Or school, I think.
Yeah.
If you'll, if you'll give us a moment, we can just pull up one slide with a map.
Great.
Okay. To show. Okay.
That'd probably be a good moment to echo the fact that the picnic in the park was very successful. I attended, and it was great to hear the orchestra, and it was a pretty mild day, and a good time was had by all.
Glad to hear it.
Right. And I was also at the Robbins House event, where a large group of people each did a reading from Frederick Douglass, and it was very moving. Really well-done event.
Are we still waiting?
Yeah, here it is.
Oh, here it is. Great.
So this is a map from the presentation that we had at the listening session last fall. The, the red area, the red hashed area shows the exclusion area. So only the white area on the map would be in compliance with the wireless bylaw. Anything in the red would require one or more waivers from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I think this, this is pretty indicative, explanatory of the problem that we have, that there really is no area in town that can cite this type of facility by right. And that's why the zoning bylaw was amended, I think in 2001, in recognition of the fact that there is no, no place to cite by right.
Carrie, what's the purple? Do you know what the purple, on the map?
I think that's, does it say federal?
Federal.
So the green, the green is town parcels.
Okay.
And I believe the purple is, is federal.
Federal.
And this is, this is, again, part of the presentation from last fall.
From October.
It is on the website.
Right. I remember now. Thank you for showing that again.
And the five, area, five locations that are noted there are, what, existing facilities? Or?
I, you have to go back down to the...
We're not sure.
Shannon, can you show the key, so it's not shown on the key?
Not shown on there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not...
Okay.
Exactly sure what those are.
What those are, yeah. I would write, I mean, the one on the far left is a Nurse-Night Hill, so that's how I'm guessing it's an existing facility, because I can see it from my house. And I'm not 1,000 feet from that.
Okay. Thank you. What's next on the agenda? The Chair's report. I'm gonna divide the Chair's report into three sections. The first is, I wanted people to be aware of the fact that every month, we have a Chair's Breakfast. I know many of you know that, but for those of you that don't, we have a Chair's Breakfast on usually the third Wednesday, sometimes the fourth Wednesday of the month, where all the Chairs of the Boards and the Committees in town come together and give each other an update on what's happening. And the purpose of it is to break down stove pipes and to get people aware of what else is happening outside of their committee. It's a great meeting. We learn a lot. We learn that a lot is going on in town. So one of the ways that you can get kind of a synopsis of what happened in that meeting is that the Finance Committee, Eric and Carlin, are putting together basically the headlines from each of the report-outs by the Chairs of various committees, and they're including that in their packet, their FinCom packet. So you don't have to watch the video. You can actually read their synopsis in their packet, and I find it very helpful. So just wanted to alert people to that. And the second thing I'd like to do is give people a legislative update on things that are happening on Capitol Hill that impact Concord. As you know, the, the legislature is really, it's crunch time now. A lot of things are happening really fast before they adjourn for the summer. Some of the things that impact us are the local transfer fee. It looks like that is not gonna happen this year. So the transfer fee that we are counting on to help us forward, fund affordable housing, will not occur, and we're gonna have to find other ways. If you'll remember, years ago, we used free cash. That was when we were very, very flush with free cash. We are no longer flush with free cash. Our free cash balance is low, so this is a, it's, it's an issue that we need to address. The second thing that was going through the legislature was something called the Municipal Empowerment Act, and it enabled towns to increase taxes on lodging, meals, and excise tax. It was not included in the final version of the Municipal Empowerment Act, however, there's a chance that it might be tacked on to the Economic Development Act. Like I said, things are very much in flux, and hopefully they'll, they will settle down by the end of the month. The other thing is that there was a million dollars in there earmarked for wastewater management at the Bedford Road Affordable Housing site. It was part of the housing bond bill. It looks like that has a good chance of passing. And then finally, we had attempted to relax the deed restriction on Junction Village, because as you know, the Junction Village parcel is restricted to open space or affordable housing. We wanted to relax that so that we could possibly integrate any affordable housing into housing that we anticipate going into the MCI parcel to the north. And that did not, again, that did not survive the Senate version of the budget, but again, it might be tacked on to the Economic Development Bill. I'm sorry that I'm saying might, 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 but things, like I said, are very much in flux, and we're watching it closely. Finally, I wanted to talk about the Pride Fest event. I did go, as Mr. Palumbo mentioned. It was really a joyful occasion. I know that many people in town were worried that it was going to attract outsiders, that were going to possibly be insurgent, and that did not happen. There were people there from all ages. It was, it was really an eye-opener for me personally, of how joyful it was, and how many people felt so good to be included and welcomed to Concord. When I campaigned for Select Board, I said I wanted it to be a welcoming community, so I didn't realize how that could be controversial sometimes. So let's, let's do what we can to continue that, because it was, it was good. So that's all I have for Chair's remarks. I think the next is liaison reports. Wendy, you wanna start?
Sure. I don't have too many. The Trustees of Town Donations met. That, that Committee, as you know, manages 40 different funds. And in their last meeting, they acknowledged that there might be some funds that are underutilized. So they are looking for some ways to get the word out of the funds and how to educate people that there may be funds available. I also hooked them up with Hugh Cargill Trust Chairs, because Hugh Cargill is one of the funds where there may be more funds that could be available. So, so we're looking to get that word out. So they're gonna work on that, and probably more feedback in September. So that's good. And then the second Committee is... And then the second committee is actually Cameron and I. We've met twice on our Subcommittee on the Flag Policy. I'll give a brief intro and then I'll let Cameron jump on from there. We've met twice. We completed a lot of research on town policies across the state. We spoke to town staff. We put together a full inventory of town flags that we have, flags that we fly, where they fly, when they fly. And I think we've come to some agreements on things that we'd like to include in the policy. At this point, I think I'll ask Cameron to add his summary of where we're going to go from here. The next steps.
Yeah, so thanks. So first off, as Wendy mentioned, a couple of meetings. And also want to thank Wendy because she's done a lot of research on the, what we do currently have in the town. And like the number of flag poles, where they're located, schools, town telephone poles, holes in the sidewalk, all those things, right? So we've got a pretty comprehensive inventory. And also, as Wendy mentioned, just, you know, looking at some other towns and even looking at some of the things, like if you go back to like the Supreme Court case, looking at some of the towns that were cited, or cities like San Jose, California, that was actually cited by the Supreme Court as having a good policy. So really trying to like investigate and understand like what, you know, what some of the best practices are that are, that are out there. So just a couple of things, you know, essentially, and I think we've talked about this before, but the policies typically kind of following it into one of two camps. One are towns that are, have a more restrictive policy where it's really sort of, you know, they've restricted things to like the US flag, the state flag, maybe a town flag, and military. And then, you know, other towns that have gone down the path with the policy that is to try to define when it is they would, when and how they would fly other flags, however you want to define, you know, other sort of non, non-federal, non-state flags. And so there is, Wendy mentioned, I think, just, you know, a couple of things that we've come across pretty typically in some of these that are starting to emerge as sort of best practices in that category. So first of all, I think as we sort of talked about, like defining that it's sort of not First Amendment or free speech, right? That it's sort of, you know, something that's very specific to how the town wants to recognize certain things. That it would typically be something that would be like sponsored by a Select Board member and approved by the Select Board. That it is oftentimes something that's restricted to either something that is a result of a proclamation or a town celebration. So these other ways of sort of defining things. And that oftentimes, you know, it is designated as there is just one pole in town. Or sometimes even a separate pole where they will fly. So in other words, Concord has like 14 flag poles in town. But that it would typically, in these policies, be, hey, we're going to fly, if we're going to fly another flag, it would be on this one pole. It would be for this one day. Again, subject to approval by the Select Board, proposal by, sponsorship by a Select Board member. So, you know, those are some of the typical things that we've seen. We have a couple of follow-up meetings scheduled. Our, our hope was that we could try to get it on the August 5th agenda more formally here with the Select Board to propose, you know, hey, here is proposed language that we could then, you know, have a discussion on and maybe make a vote.
Okay, that's good. That sounds great. I really like the approach. Are you also going to look at the keep our current policy and as one of the alternatives?
Sure, yes, yes. So we've looked at the current policy. We will certainly, that can be on the table.
Good.
We, we think that we will certainly bring suggestions as to how we could, you know, again, sort of, maybe, you know, okay, we could keep the current policy, but, you know, here might be the limitations on that. So here's what we might propose as an alternative.
Okay.
I think for us, it's like, we want to bring the specific proposals to the table, to the Select Board. Right, rather than say like, here is the answer.
That's right.
More just like, okay, here's, here's what we have seen as the options, and here's what we're, you know, specifically would propose as options.
That's great. So you're targeting right now, if I understand, August 5th?
Yes.
To come with proposals?
Correct.
And I see, and I see it falling in three different categories. Pretty strict, a little bit looser, or best practices that you're learning, and the do nothing.
Yes, yes, that's fair.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Does anybody have any other comments, questions? Okay, Wendy?
That's it.
You're done, okay. Terry, go ahead.
Okay, got to get used to sharing this microphone, huh? Okay. So the 2229 Main Street Task Force is making a lot of progress. They've now drafted their report outline. And they are still on time to come in by October 31 to the Select Board with their recommendations. There's a lot of action going on with Hanscom. As you've probably heard, the MEPA report, they have, the developer has to go back and redo the environmental impact report. So they received 1,500 comment letters, including from the Select Board here. At the HFAC meeting, there was a consultant who reported on a study that we had funded on UFPs, ultrafine particles. And what they found was that this usually happens in Bedford because it's downwind from the airport, that the levels are exceeding the WHO recommended standards. And sometimes when the wind is coming the opposite way from the east, it is exceeding standards in the Thoreau Farm area in Concord. So they're going to, they're going to be sending a letter to the Secretary of Environment about this. They're also working on sending a comment letter on what's called the ESPR. And the Select Board might be asked to send a similar letter or endorse their letter. The ESPR is an environmental status and planning report that's done. It's basically their five-year plan for Hanscom. There are a lot of comments that I've seen a draft of. The very first one affects Concord, where they talk about, in the report, the Minuteman National Park and the Wildlife Refuge being a quote "buffer zone" for the airport. Well, the thing is, they're not just some buffer zone. These are important lands that we are using for valuable events. And valuable open space, historic, et cetera. So that's the kind of thing that we might really want to comment on. The HATS group is also discussing whether they're going to comment. They're meeting on Wednesday. They probably will comment and ask individual boards to comment. So I'll be back to you about that. Also on the HFAC, we are looking for a new rep. And so far, we haven't found anyone interested. But what might happen is, I've been talking with Mary about this. In Bedford, the Select Board Liaison, Emily Mitchell, is also the official rep for HFAC. So we may end up having me become the official rep. And I'll get back to you on that as well. And then finally, at the 250th, we're going to hear from them tonight. We have their first monthly report. I also want to highlight that there's an event, August 11th, that they've been working on called the 250th Countdown. August 11th is the day that's 250 days before April 19. So there's going to be a big lantern parade. There's going to be all kinds of events that day. So look for more information. It's coming up, you know, just in just about a month now. Also, speaking of letters, this is the last thing I have. But Shannon and I have been starting to work on that no-fly zone request from Hanscom for the April 19th Bridge Ceremony. We're working with Simone from the National Park. And the 250th Committee will support our letter. And I've also talked to HATS and HFAC about it. So that's it for my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark?
Great, so going back to the legislative updates. The MCI Concord Advisory Board met today and also two weeks ago. And both of those are recorded. And I know the two weeks ago meeting's been posted on MMN for a while. Quite interesting, Commissioner Backy from the Department of Capital Asset Management, Decam from the state, joined us the first time and gave an overview. And some of the members of the Decam team, Abby Velodick and Paul Lillhagen, were with us today and also gave kind of an inventory and an overview of the site. So that's, that's particularly important. But one of the things that they highlighted was two things that are tied directly into the passage of this year's state budget. With the passage of the budget, the Decam will have 30 days to offer the town the wastewater treatment facility. So there's quite a bit of assessment work going on to understand that already with the town staff. And we would, we understand we would have 180 days to respond to that offering of that facility. So that may drive some additional decision-making, including if town meeting has to authorize such a transfer, we may have a schedule to deal with there.
Right.
Also, within 45 days of the passage of the enactment of the budget, so I guess we would read that to the governor's signature.
Right, August.
Whenever that occurs. That will start a 45-day countdown clock, which will be the first of at least three public meetings that Decam is required to have. And the MCI Advisory Board is looking to help coordinate that, which would be oriented towards helping the citizens come to understand the site, understand the process, which, as I mentioned, can be, you can get a preview of some of that by looking at the recording of today's meeting. There are other triggers, but those two are specific to the, to the passage of this year's budget. So more than usual interest in exactly when the budget passes so that we know when those clocks start exactly. The expectation is that that first public outreach meeting is likely to be scheduled early September, if the current course and speed holds on that. I did attend the Sustainability Roundtable. I think it was a great, great starting point. And, and that kind of thing, the roundtable meetings that we're having is likely to be the sort of model that we would use as well when we discuss the planning opportunities, the visioning opportunities around MCI Concord. The CMS Building Committee has been meeting. And that project, we're pleased to report, is still moving along on schedule and on budget. The Town Meeting Study Committee is off and running, having met on the 18th. And with Subcommittee meetings that are also geared towards gathering information and looking at ways to make proposals for town meeting improvement. The Warner's Pond Task Force is also meeting. That process is shifting to sort of identifying the several options that are available, meaning dam removal, dredging, status quo, which I hesitate to call do nothing, but that's the relative no change. And whether there's a possible fourth option. So that, that discussion will next take place on, I'm looking at Paul, the 18th, I think, is the next Warner's Pond Task Force meeting. And I think that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Cameron?
Great, thanks. So, yeah, just wanted to update on the light plant. So I spent a couple hours with Jason Bulger and the team. Got a great tour, and so I wanted to just thank them for, for hosting me. And also, just, it was really great to see, you know, talk to some of the different team members about, you know, some of the things that they're doing. And, you know, I think that the, the team there continues to deliver, you know, outstanding customer service. I think that's reflected in a lot of the feedback that they get. So certainly, you know, a positive time spent with them. A couple of, a couple of just sort of challenges to note, or points to note. I did sort of ask about cost. There's 41 towns in the, in the state that, that have their own light plant. We're currently benchmarked as the second highest in terms of our electricity rates. And I think, you know, some of that comes with some of the projects that we've been doing around sort of clean energy and some of the recs for solar, et cetera. With the MCI closure, the estimate is that if that was to go completely offline, it would be adding about $2 a month to the electricity rates for the average consumer in Concord. I don't think there's an expectation that they'll literally shut off all the lights. So I think it's more likely that, you know, there'll be something less than that, you know. But sort of $1 to $2 a month is probably the, the expectation as far as the electricity rate increase for the average customer. And the other thing that's maybe a little bit of a challenge from a cost perspective, they've gotten some, some bids for the, for the solar canopy. And some of the concrete pilings are coming in like much higher than what was budgeted. So...
This is at the landfill?
At the middle school.
Oh, at the middle school? We'll talk about the landfill later.
So, yeah, so sorry. So the, the concrete pilings for the solar canopy at the middle school.
Oh.
So, so right now, and they're, they're working on it, but right now, what's come in is about, you know, $2 million for that, which I think was budgeted a million or a million one or something. So it's a pretty significant cost difference. And they're seeing a lot of cost pressure on some of the estimates they're getting for that, for that project. So that's something that they're continuing to, to work on. Just a couple of other things from the standpoint of the battery that was approved at the town meeting. That was from, recall, sort of the 10, 10 million, 10 and a half million. They are continuing to work and actively in discussions with some third-party partners. So that is still an option that's very much, you know, going to be sort of under consideration. And in this week's meeting, recall, there was some traffic around the landfill solar.
Right.
And so that is on the agenda for this week's light plant meeting, is to talk about the landfill solar and what are the, some of the development opportunities there.
Okay. I want to, I just want to clarify something. So the cost overrun, not overrun, but the increased estimate for the, the, I guess, the solar...
The closure of, if, yeah.
At the middle school.
Oh, sorry, for the middle school.
I'm back to the middle school, back to the middle school.
Yes.
So those are canopies, right?
Yes.
And it's going to cost more. That's not part of the middle school budget? That is so completely out of the light plant as an edge price fund, is that?
That, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so you're correct. The, the cost of the construction of the solar canopy is, is a town budget item through the light plant.
Okay.
And the bids, so there was an opportunity to potentially have the general contractor, who's building the middle school,
Yep.
install the footings for those canopies.
Mm-hmm.
And when that was costed out by them, it came back too high.
Okay.
So the light plant decided that they will take that out separate bid because they feel like they can get better pricing by bidding that out separate from the middle school.
Okay.
But they are, have work to resolve the scheduling potential impacts of, you know, a construction project in the parking lot of the middle school impacting anything to do with that schedule. So they've got that kind of lined up. So it is a light plant project, and it does not affect the middle school budget.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you. Cameron?
Uh, yeah, sorry, that's it for me.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, great.
Mary, I did have one more, one question from Mark. It went so quickly to Cameron. About Warner's Pond, you mentioned the three options of dam removal, status quo, dredging. I remember someone talking about a, kind of a modified dredging, where they wouldn't have to truck the material. Has there been more discussion of that?
So there's going to be quite a bit of discussion at the next meeting about the exact scope of the, of the various option subgroups and how they're going to do that. But the dredging option looks like an evaluation of the, not only the past dredging proposals, but also what might be effective dredging and what other options there might be to, to do dredging. So they'll, they'll draw a line about that. The fourth potential option, which we're still discussing whether it's feasible, is related to ideas like a side-channeled pond. related to ideas like a side-channel pond kind of, which is a more complicated sort of earthworks project, which kind of, which could potentially be a hybrid between, you know, some kind of restoration of the, of the stream at the same time that a pond is created through a dredging process. So that's still being looked at for feasibility first, and then we'll discuss whether or not that's going to be a full-blown option or put off a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah. But various levels of dredging will probably be in the dredging group.
Okay, I'll give my liaison reports. The Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust is having a roundtable in August. They're also going to be coming to the select board on July 22nd to give us an update as a preview to that. And we should know that they've got $2 million right now in the bank. Most of that is the money that they got when Junction Village Project was put on hold. And without the local transfer tax, the $2 million is something that they've got to spend very wisely. Some of that will go to the three affordable units that are being built at the Estebet Bluff. The CHDC right now is entertaining bids from contractors to build those three units, and I think the estimate there is about $1 million. The other thing the housing trust is working on is updating the housing production plan in light of the 2020 census. And also, they think that this is important, given the MCI and the state's interest in building housing on that parcel. I also went to the Warner Pond Forum. The thing that I, so the Warner's Pond Forum, when you walked in, it was tables and you were sat at a table and you were immediately asked, what did you want to see at the pond? And several people raised their hand and said that they really didn't know they wanted more information. So they needed to be grounded or updated on what was known about the pond before they articulated what they wanted. And I thought that was a good lesson for us to keep in mind when we have any forums, which is to ground people on, you know, what we know to date, before we just kind of ask them, what, what would you like to see? So that was a good learning for me. The Economic Vitality Committee, they had a meeting from Mark Giddings from the Planning Board, and the Planning Board is updating their parking requirements. They're hoping to update their parking requirements this year and bring something to the 2025 town meeting. That has three implications. It has an implication for business, because when businesses vacate, sometimes the parking requirements are restrictive and it's hard to get another tenant. So it has an implication on the vitality of our downtowns and our village retail shops. It also has an impact on housing, because right now our parking requirements are pretty strict as far as requiring two units, two spaces per unit, and it makes it more expensive for development, so we're hoping that we can update that as well. And then finally, it also has implications on transportation, because the more parking you require, or the less parking you require, the theory is that the more other modes of transportation you encourage. So parking is something that impacts both economic vitality, housing, and on transportation. So we'll be hearing more about that. FinCom, they're well on their way to their guideline process, and they're going to be here with us, and we'll hear more from them later on. And then finally, I went to the Juneteenth proclamation out here. That was a wonderful event. It was a really hot day, so when we went over to the Robbins House, I kind of had to leave because I was wilting, but it was still a very beautiful day, and I'm glad, I'm glad we do that every year. Okay, that's it. It is 6:54, and we are right on schedule. Mike, you want to talk to us about Nani?
Member of the Concord and Nani Network.
Do you want to sit here, Mike?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I want to bring you up to date. You might remember last October, we had a 25-year celebration of our sister city relationship with Nani. Eleven-member delegation came here and spent time at school in the town. We had a lovely banquet to celebrate the end of the visit, and then we convened here in the hearing room and connected with our friends in Nani via Zoom to have a joint signing ceremony, and also had many songs played by the Concord Fife and Drum Corps. So the update this evening is, this year in October, we will be receiving another delegation from Nani. It'll be at the end of October, around the 26th. They'll stay until early November. All of the guests will stay with families here in town, and there are schoolchildren as part of the delegation, and they'll be participating in events at the school. And the adults will be spending time with town officials and schoolteachers, and we're looking forward to that visit. Next year, the exciting news in '25 is that we're planning a visit from the Concord folks to Nani. And that looks like it's going to happen at the end, middle end of June, 16, something like that, for about a week. And I wrote to the town manager and was delighted to hear back from her that there's interest from the town manager, the select board, and town employees to be on that delegation. We're also reaching out to members of the network, to families that have hosted homestays, and to folks on the school committee and schoolteachers to be part of the delegation. Usually, the trip involves flying into Tokyo, and then one of two quick itineraries, either flying up to Sapporo, which is on the sort of east coast of the island, and then staying there for a couple of days and understanding the connections Concord has to Sapporo. Help found was the Wheeler family, an agricultural college, which is in Sapporo now. And then usually, we take a bus trip across the top of the island, stopping at a famous spa for a day, and then arriving at Nani and spending about a week there, where we'd meet with town officials, families, and have some field trips. That's one version. The other version is going into Nani and then going to Sapporo. Usually, the delegation will be about 20 to 30 people, and we're looking forward to that. We don't have any of the detailed plans yet made. Certainly, the network will try to arrange hotels and buses and things like that. And usually, it's the case that some of the members of the delegation would have a pre-trip or a post-trip tacked on before or after their visit to Nani. So we're very excited about that. We haven't been back since, I think, 2017, and where we were presented with an indigenous robe that's out in the hall, celebrating our 20th anniversary. So that's my update, Madam Chair, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Best part of the agenda. Any comments?
Just coming in, Nancy Maginette, who is one of the chairs of Connections. So you just missed her.
I'm so sorry. I thought this started at seven.
Six fifty-five.
Six fifty-five.
So we're happy to answer any questions.
Nancy, do you want to say anything? You can say something.
No, except that we're, we're very excited that things are back on track with Nani, and we're hoping that there will be an array of citizens and town employees, select people, whoever can go on the adult trip next year.
Thank you.
So is there any particular event that's taken place in Nani that is centered around? The last time we visited in 2017, it was the 60th anniversary of the, of the founding of the, of the town of Nani, and we participated in that celebration. And you and I were both there, and it was wonderful. I'm just wondering if there's a particular anniversary or, or event that we're celebrating in this particular trip that we should.
Not yet. We'll be trying to work out some themes for the visit, but it's not a milestone event like our, like our last visit in 2017.
Thanks so much for the update. This is very exciting. I know several of us are interested, and my question right now is, for October, how can people help if we want to volunteer to help with an event or be a host family or what? What do you need and how do, what do we do?
Well, we'll, we'll be finalizing and making our plans a little more solid in the coming weeks, and we'll be happy to reach out to you and promise to put you to work.
Okay. So, Mike, I did a little bit of research on Nani, and it looked like it's an agricultural community. Right, so I'm wondering, should we have someone from our own agricultural committee, our community here as part of that delegation?
We have in the past. In 2017, Steve Farrell and his daughter Jen accompanied us on a trip.
Yep.
I don't remember 2015 if we had members of the farming community or not. We'll certainly reach out to them, to all the farms in town to see if we can get, it's a wonderful agricultural community. We've had a lot of visits to a hydroponic vegetable farm, which is blow your mind, and a fantastic mushroom farm.
Right.
So, yeah.
This might be something to bring up at the AI Committee. And I'm the liaison, so I'll bring it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, one of the main connections between Massachusetts and Nani and Hokkaido in general is the introduction of the apple into Japan was driven by the State of Massachusetts' University of Massachusetts, and, and the Wheeler family had to do with that as well.
It wasn't Johnny Appleseed?
Nope.
Any other questions, comments?
No, it's great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Okay, we're ahead of time. We've got a public hearing for National Grid at 7:10. We're ahead of time, so let's move to the budgetary update from the 250th. Are they available?
I'm not sure if Gary is coming by Zoom or in person.
If there's anything else we want to tackle before.
We could start discussing our goals.
Yeah, let's get that done.
Let's start. Okay. So how long, how long do we have?
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes. How about tell jokes?
We just have to start the public hearing at 7:10 or after.
Okay.
Just can't start it early.
So if we want to talk about, cool, I could kick it off with a couple of thoughts.
Go ahead.
So first of all, thank you, like Mary and team, for putting all this together, because I think it, I think it's a good document. So, you know, I like the, the way that we did this together, right? And getting everybody's sort of feedback and input and talking about it. So I thought that was, that was really great. There is a question here, I see, on increased participation in town government. Is this under the purview of the select board?
Right.
I think this might have been me who wrote that down. My, my thought was, how do we get, and I'm going to link it to something on DEI, actually, but how do we, my, my thought is, how do we get more people who can participate on some of the committees? Like, do we have to, you know, how, how can we recruit? Because I think, while it's great that we have a lot of people who are involved, I think we could, we could get more people involved. And I think sometimes we see, you know, people who are on, almost have to be on like the same committees for a long time, or on multiple committees, whereas we could get more, if we can get more participation more broadly, you know, from within the town. So I don't know how much that's our purview, but I think it's, some of it is.
I, I think that's great. I, I, this bullet that you have under here, fully represent the community, get more people involved, reduce reliance, you know, on multiple, if, if that bullet does move to the DEI, it would fit in really well.
Well, and so this is where the, my link, where I would like to create the link. So there's a point here, expand underrepresented voices in, under DEI. In town-sponsored arts and culture programs, I actually think it can be broader. I think it can be programs and committees.
Yes.
Because for me, one of the things that I'm very interested in is, and I don't know the answer to this, is like, when you look at our committees, do they represent the town? Right? So, so, and, and when you look at like our town meeting and you look at those things, like, do they represent the town? Right? Because it, it's, ideally, you say like, where I work, we say, how do we represent, like, how do we have our staff represent the communities that we serve? Right? So it's, I mean, maybe some of that is actually getting some data, too, but, but, you know, how is it that we can do, look at sort of, what is the makeup of our committees? How are, are we, whether we intend to or not, are we being, I don't know if it's, are we being inclusive, but how can we make it so that it is more representative?
I think maybe looking at the makeup of our committees and how that mirrors the demographics of the town.
Right, exactly. That's what, exactly, exactly.
Might be a good way to think of it.
Yes.
But this is a challenge that we've been facing for a long time.
Yeah.
You know?
It's, yeah, so I know it's not like, sort of like, oh, well, we'll, we'll have it solved, but.
Right, right. I mean, you know, putting it out there as a goal.
Yes.
And getting some creative ideas.
Yes.
Is, is certainly worthy.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so really, the broader, I think it would come down to the change in this document would be pretty simple, which is just at the la, just to say, expand upper, underrepresented voices in to, in town programs and committees.
Yeah, I think that's great. And I'll just share something real.
Because it's just a little bit broader.
Yeah, I like that. And I'll share something real quick. We have been struggling with this the whole time I've been on the board.
Right.
For five, five years. I'm sure they were struggling before that. But I think one of our jobs is to go out and recruit people. When we see, if someone comes to you on the street with a complaint or whatever, you know, how about you get involved? So there have been some people.
We're watching them.
Right? But we actually have had some success in the last few years. There was a person just a few months ago who kept coming to a bunch of meetings, and I finally asked this person, well, you know, how about a committee? And we went over the whole volunteer card form and the whole thing, right? And the person said, wow, I've never been asked before. I've lived in town for however many decades. And, well, anyway, I think we just need to do a lot of that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And if, like, Mary, I like your suggestion, data on the demographics, just to understand, right? And say, hey, where are there maybe some, some gaps or some underrepresented areas?
Right, because this person was from an underrepresented group and didn't feel comfortable. And then when I went and asked them, it made a difference for them.
So Cameron, do you want to actually put that here explicitly to collect data to see if?
We can say, yeah, expand, you know, I like sort of, I like the way, expand underrepresented voices.
Yep. In town programs and committees, yep.
You know, and then maybe something that says, you know, dash something.
Actually, you have data somewhere else on here. I think you, you put something else somewhere in here about using data that we might be able to just.
Oh, utilize data to make decisions, I think we have under the select board processes.
There you go, right, the very next one.
Yep.
Well, I, I'm, do people want to make this explicit, or is what we just discussed?
I like this change, just expand underrepresented voices in town programs and committees.
I know, but my question was, do we want to make it explicit that we're going to collect data to see if the membership in committees mirrors the demographics of the town?
I, I like it. I mean, I think adding that.
I mean, that could be, make it, that would be a way to make it measurable.
Yes.
What do you think?
So that's a bit of a how.
Yeah, that's true.
I guess the committee chairs could be charged with collecting that, but it's sort of, how do you, like, where do you draw the line on what you have and how really representative is? If you've got a five-member committee or a seven-member committee, I don't, it's going to be challenging, I think.
I wasn't thinking committee, each committee's going to mirror. I thought as a whole, it would, we could see if we look at all of the.
Collectively.
Yeah, collectively, if we look at all of our committees, and, and I don't.
I don't know. I think we need to.
I don't know.
Think it through, like, if, for example, if the town manager's office is doing it, are they going to know the sexual orientation, the age, and the racial identity of everybody? And it's going to, it might be complicated to collect the state. I don't, I think we have to think it through. I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
But I don't know how to do it right now.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
All right, well, we won't, I mean, it's to Mark's point, I mean, we can still do it. It's just, it becomes a little bit of a how to.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Then what I just heard us say is, this bullet that's in yellow has now been moved down to, under the DEI, right?
Well, I think, are we including the one under it? Fully represent the community? You know, it's like, that, that bullet, is that part of it?
No, I don't know. I think, I guess what I heard was that if we expand underrepresented. No, I don't know. I think, I guess what I heard was that if we expand underrepresented voices in town programs and committees, that captures what we, what this is saying.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, right? So that's taken out?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Anything else that people would like to?
So I had a, a couple.
Go ahead.
Is, under section five, I, I recognize that, you know, the discussion about the flag policy came up in a certain context, but it didn't strike me as being something that I would categorize under diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would probably more likely land that up around select board, improve select board processes. If we're really discussing how we reach a decision on that, I'd be more comfortable seeing it there. I think it's, it's on us to do that.
I agree. How do other people feel?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And the other one was, let me just make sure it's still in there. Okay, yeah, pursue pilot agreements. So I had a question about that, and I know we've got some work being done on this, that was in our packet, but is that about establishing a policy, starting a process, or actually getting agreements in place? It seemed to me that we're kind of in the starting blocks of that.
I, I, I thought it was kind of all three.
Okay.
Yeah, me too, but I think we should wait and see what develops in our discussion that we have.
So we'll circle back to this. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Would you please, thank you. Anything else, Mark?
No.
Okay, Wendy, go ahead.
So under, I guess it's section three.
Yep.
And it was under take action to improve town infrastructure. We have road maintenance, but I'd also say, and funding, because I think we need to really improve the funding for road maintenance.
Yep.
And that's a 2026 thing, but I think that would be worth.
Yeah, but we're going to be doing the budget for 2026.
But my point, that's my point, because we've got to figure out how we can help the town manager with more funding, is my point.
I'm okay with that.
Everybody else?
Okay.
And then, just the next one, under the climate action plan, which was mine.
Yes.
We can remove the, I, I just, we don't need to be so prescriptive on dates here.
Okay.
I originally did that, but we could remove that by October 2024 and by January 2025. I just, we've got to figure out how we're going to do it.
Okay, okay, okay.
It was me trying to be smart, maybe too smart.
Okay.
I think we just dropped the dates. We'll, we'll still work out.
So Wendy, what you're saying is, you just want to take out the by October 2024?
Yeah.
Take out the by January 2025?
Right.
Do you want to leave this, the words in perenned, under Article 31 and?
Yeah, because that's part of the reason.
Okay, 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 good, great. Okay, Terry? Are you done, are you done, Wendy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I had a few. In section one, the first one, where it says, establish goals that align and integrate, that's a typo.
Okay.
And I think it should say, between select board, town boards, committees, and staff. Because I think the way we were talking about it before was, the select board is going to have our goals, and then we're going to align everybody else. And.
Good luck.
Yeah.
We're going to try.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
In the land use opportunities.
Yep.
I thought the last bullet should be the first one, because it sets up for all the rest of the stuff. Work with the SMT to develop this matrix, and I put an action plan to determine the best matches between municipal needs and potential land available. So if that bullet's first, then after that, we talk about MCI.
Well, it's not going to sequence like that.
No?
No, because we're already engaged with MCI, we're already engaged with 2229 main. I mean, I think these have to be concurrent.
Yeah, it's concurrent. I don't mean it has to be sequence, I don't know. I just thought it belonged first, but you might not have to agree with me. But I think that this matrix, though, should have an action plan, not just say what we have now, but what else needs to be done? Who's going to do what by when? So that it's really a land use plan.
I think that's a little bit too ambitious.
Because we have a very good matrix already done tonight in our packet.
Well, that's a list, that's an inventory.
That's a list. Now we just have to start adding talk to it.
I.
But are we going to get it out with the MCI task force, 2229? I mean, we need to understand what our properties are, where they're available, and start discussion on how to use them, but I think it is aggressive.
How about work toward action plan or something? Start discussing it. I guess I don't want to just end with just a matrix.
I don't think we will. I think we'll use that to inform decisions around how to use MCI, how to use 2229 main. So I, that's the, sorry. Oops, I'm not.
Okay, and then, in the first bullet, I think there might be a couple of typos. It says, engage the community, legislation, delegation, state agencies, and a robust planning process that, is that supposed to say ensures?
Probably.
Ensures that conquered's interest, da-da-da. And then, in the next one, agreements between the town and the state, cross out exists. Agreements between the town and the state, that outline, I'm not sure exactly.
I'm sorry, where are you?
There's a typo or what?
I was looking at.
This part right here, agreements between the town and the state.
Just get rid of the yes and outlines, that outline, the disposition.
Agreements between the town and the state.
That outlines.
Just take out exists.
Okay, okay.
That outlines, yeah, I take out exists, okay.
Just visit, right.
And then the last one, the outline of a rezoning plan is under development with broad community input, is this supposed to be?
Yeah, it looks like something got cut off there.
Yeah.
Okay. And then on the next page, I just have a couple of them.
Did you get all these, Andrea?
I'm too fast.
Yes, she did.
Trying to rush through so we can get to the public hearing.
No, no, we're not rushing. Go ahead.
Okay.
You're fine.
On the next page, I agree with Wendy's comment on the road maintenance. And then right after road maintenance, I would add something like safe street infrastructure. Because we don't want to just do road maintenance. We have to talk about, I put in parentheses, trails, sidewalks, bike lanes, crosswalks. This is stuff that the transportation committee was asked by this board to work with a consultant, and they're just about to, you know, put down the detail of, of exactly.
What would be the measurable or specific outcomes of that?
Right. Maybe a, an, a funding plan is one of the ones they're looking at, or a criteria is another one that they're looking for. Which streets should we do it for?
So maybe we could look for the, because we, we have a road improvement plan, and, I'm sorry, the road improvement plan breaks down into the roads that are the maintenance activities, the resurfacing, the various.
Right.
Crack sealing and that kind of thing is meant to maintain the pavement condition index. And then we have things like the reconfiguration of intersections and curb bumpouts, which is more of an investment in the, in the design or the configuration of the roads.
Yeah, I mean, it could all be in one bullet if you want. It could be like road and streetscape maintenance or something like that.
Or road maintenance, come improvement and funding.
Okay.
Okay.
But not just for the roads, right? Because we also have to do the intersections and trails, the sidewalks, I don't know. Okay, and then I only have two more left.
Go ahead.
Three, actually. Okay, financial planning and stability.
Yep.
Second bullet says, evaluate town-owned properties for possible, I think it should say reuse or disposition. For example, PBB, we might reuse it, we might dispose of it, I don't know.
I think that would, but the intent was to capture that in the matrix, but it's okay to say it twice. It's fine, too.
And then to add another bullet at the end of this about updating revolving and enterprise fund fees and chargebacks so that the revenues keep up with actual cost of services.
Actually, I, I have spoken with the town manager about that, and I think we're there already. I think we do update that. Well, Carrie, I think you and I had a conversation about this, and you assured me, I'm talking into the microphone, and you assured me that we do revisit this every year, and that they are accurately reflecting the value of the services.
So I, I would say we're probably not as far off as people think. We did revisit it every year, not, not for fiscal '25 because of the other changes that we were making. But I, I don't think that we're as far off as, as people think that we are.
Yeah, it strikes me that that's basically a part of the normal budgeting process, and it's one of the things that's usually covered in the enterprise budget hearings, is what the fee structure is for a lot of the enterprise types of thing, anyway.
Yes. We, we certainly have work to do, but I, I don't think, we're not going to find that we're missing hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in chargebacks.
So the question is, do, should it be a priority, or is it part of the budget process? Or is it something that's?
Well, I guess I had understood that it was a project that was done every few years, and that we hadn't done it recently, especially like certain fees that might be out of date because of inflation, but I could be wrong on that.
So fees, fees are different than, than the chargebacks to enterprise funds and other revolving funds. So fees, I would agree, we need to look at fees. We're in the process of looking at ambulance fees.
Yeah.
Right now.
Recreation fees, sports clubs, all, all of our fees, I think.
Okay.
I think it's a priority for me because we are always talking about, you know, free cash is not what it was. We're going to have to take some hard, make some hard decisions. That's why I was thinking of making it a priority.
Okay, so what, instead of chargebacks, do you want to focus on fees?
Okay, well, sure, I had them both, but if the chargebacks are up to date, we could just put fees.
Great. Okay, I'm okay with that. Other people?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, okay.
And then I think this is the last thing. There's, I think there's kind of a duplicate where it says endorse and update financial stability goals. The third bullet says, review and outline, which might be a line, I'm not sure, of town manager and department goals. And I think that that is already back in the very first bullet, where we have established goals that align and integrate between select board, town boards, committees, and staff.
The step, we didn't include in that town department, so maybe if we expand this very first bullet to include town departments.
Right, and we already added select board.
Right.
Right.
That covers it.
Okay.
What do you think?
Yeah, I think that bullet was intended to read an outline, not and outline.
Where is that again? The one we're taking out?
The.
Oh, there it is.
Last one under four. Review and outline of the town manager and town department goal.
Great, okay, good. Okay.
Okay.
Very good. We all set? Good, we good?
Yes.
I think we need to vote, unless, I'm going to open it up to public comment before we vote. Does anybody have any comment on these goals? Don't see any. Very good.
Don't see anybody online.
Do I have a motion?
Yep. Move to approve the fiscal 2025 goals as amended at this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Very good.
Move to open the public hearing for the grant of location and request for gas main petition for National Grid at 1 to 150 Lexington Road.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mary, are you here?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say, well.
Go ahead.
Being a National Grid employee, I tend to recuse myself from the, so I'm happy to listen in, but I'm not planning to vote or weigh in. I don't think it would be appropriate, so I'm, I'm going to recuse myself from deliberation.
I appreciate that.
So if you are going to recuse yourself, you actually should step down from the table and, and leave the room.
And go into.
That's fine. No, that's fine. That's why I wanted to call it out of the public line. So, if someone can just let me know then when it's done.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, yes, we'll call you back.
So we do, Mary Mulrooney?
Mary Mulrooney, you can unmute and address the meeting.
Good evening.
Hi, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. National Grid respectfully requests your consent to replace 1,650 feet of 4-inch coated steel main in Lexington Road with 8-inch plastic from the existing 8-inch plastic near 150 Lexington Road to the existing 8-inch plastic main in Monument Square.
Any comments or questions from the select board?
No, I just had one comment. Was this first applied in 2021? There were two dates on that application, so I wasn't sure if this was a new application or an old one that was modified, has been sitting around.
I have the same question.
Yeah.
Um, yes, this, this was submitted first, and the town engineers worked with National Grid and, and solved some of the questions that the town, the town engineers had. And it was updated, and now it's back in for a grant approval, so National Grid can apply for permit.
So how confident are you that you'll be able to finish this project by October? Because that's very soon now.
I, I agree this, I brought forth this to the managers and expressed the concern, and they work with your town engineers, and they're confident that it can be done.
Okay, because once the construction season ends, I'm the liaison for the 250th, I mean, I understand how we cannot do this next spring.
Yes.
It has to be finished.
And that was clear in the documentation.
It is clear. It is very clear, yep.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify something, though. On the packet in page 33, which is page four of, four of the Concord Public Works Engineering Division memo, the last paragraph before the one that's numbered 13, trench plates, the last sentence of that paragraph reads, "All construction, including final paving, may, must occur in the fall of 2024 prior to October 31, 2025." Now, I'm betting that that should say 2024.
Oh, good catch, thank you.
And cannot be pushed into the spring of 2025 due to a major town event in the spring of 2025. So I just wanted to make sure, I'm not sure if there's somebody here from engineering at once.
There, there is, both, both Steve Duker, a town engineer, and Justin Richardson, assistant town engineer. If one of you gentlemen would be able to respond to that question.
You are correct, that should say 2024.
Okay, and Ms. Mulrooney, with that correction, being really explicit about being done by October 31, 2025, are you in a position to agree to that for National Grid?
24.
24, thank you.
Um, yes, that's, that's what I was told. It's October 31, 2024.
Great. That was my question.
Okay, any comment from, any questions from the public?
Anybody on Zoom?
No, I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Don't see anybody.
Do we close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the grant of location request for gas main petition for National Grid at 100, at 1 to 150 Lexington Road in accordance with the conditions provided by Concord Public Works as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Mary.
So Mary, I just had one comment, and maybe this is more for the town manager. This is a very busy road, and if they're going to do it this fall, and it's, I mean, it's with all the commuter traffic, I just, I hope that we'll put some kind of signage up telling people to seek alternate routes, et cetera. I mean, maybe that's the norm, but there's a lot of traffic that goes through there, so.
Yep.
Just fair warning to everybody.
That was just a comment, right?
Yeah, it's just a comment, right?
We heard that.
Right, yes.
Well, that actually, I do have one more question then from, from Mary. Do you know, once they get started, will this project take, like, if the weather's good, how long will the project take?
Um, the project will take several, several weeks. Um, the project will take several, several weeks. Um, and ye, yes, there'll be, I, I just noted it, that, that you'd like a, um, a signage board put up, but again, um, your town engineers are fantastic and, and they have strong stipulations for National Grid. So, um, we, National Grid works with your town, but I have noted all your concerns, and it, it will take weeks.
Wow. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Um, let's do the budgetary update from the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. I see Gary's here. Gary, you want to? You could come here or you could stand, whichever you're more comfortable. Okay.
So, um, I prepare, um, with the support and assistance of other members of the Concord Two-Fiftieth Executive Committee, uh, monthly report.
Which, now we're good. Um, prayer for, uh, the select board, a monthly report, this is something that you've requested, and we look forward to being able to provide those reports to you between now and April of twenty twenty-five. Thank you for, be very mindful of activities that will happen between now and then and how that might inter, interface or interact or interfere with Concord Two-Fifty activities. So the previous work of this board, um, and your concerns is noted, much appreciated. So, um, I hope the report is self-explanatory. I think what I'd like to highlight this evening or ask this evening, one, is this meet your expectations of the kind of information you're looking for from the executive committee? And then there's a couple of events that I want to highlight before I, um, this evening just to give more public attention, awareness of what's unfolding over the next number of months, which will be increasingly more and more programs and activities and lots of excitement in that regard. So perhaps to the first question, does this as a report work for you in terms of what you're looking for?
It, it actually exceeds what I was expecting. Um, I was expecting, um, a budget report, so I was looking right at the numbers because I know that there was a little bit of confusion a few months ago about how much money was available and how it was going to be allocated among your sub, all of your committees and the other. So this is actually more. Um, it's very helpful, it's interesting. Um, so I think maybe going forward, what I would like would be to focus more on the budget and then leave it up to you to say, what are some other things that you want to use this forum to give visibility to? Okay?
Good. Um, just specifically, it would be helpful to me if the funds expended column indicated what the date of, you know, usually it would be funds expended through some, the end of some month or the end of a quarter, so we can understand that. And, um, it's, the, the amounts are fairly small, so I'll leave it up to you whether it may, begins to make sense at some point to actually include what the funds, what, funds are being expended in a particular month, but just to know what date that represents is, is good enough.
Good point, and that will become, I hope, more clear in subsequent monthly reports that, yes, we're looking at by way of a budget update as of June one or July one or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it could be the current expenses could, could be another column on that is, is another way to do it.
And the other thing would be, um, when you're looking at your funds expended, that will be updated, obviously, but any kind of other sources of funding that you have, you can update that as well.
Absolutely.
The other thing I'd like to, maybe in the verbiage, would be any risks that you see to any of these numbers? Because I know we've talked about, is there any risk to the public safety number? That feels to me like it's kind of a soft number. Um, anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, it's, Mary, yes, um, understood, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And mindful, you know, let's continue to look at this overall budget, because we're, what we're presenting you is something at twenty thousand feet or so, but, um, a number of the expenditures, particularly some of the large expenditures, are going to be, as I expect, would be incurred as we get very close to
That's right.
The time of April twenty twenty-five. Public safety, parade, um, and, um, well, and so forth. So they represent, those expenditures will represent a significant part of the budget.
Right, exactly, exactly, yep. Anybody else have any?
I was really delighted with this report, Gary, and thank everybody for putting it together, answered a lot of our questions. And, um, you know, as time goes on, I, I, I know you're going to be getting more detail as time goes on, so, um, I don't think we need like all of this text every single time, but a budget update, um, for example, um, you know, if it gets divided, you know, the lantern program is a certain amount and the, uh, family festival is a certain, once you know all that stuff, not now, you know, when you get that information?
Yeah, the, the question for you as a board will be, how deeply do you want to get into that?
One page is great.
So, um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just sort of reiterate kind of the principles that I think Mary and Mark were, were talking about, which is, it, how, how do we know if we're on track?
Right, right.
Right? I mean, that's essentially like, hey, look, here, here's one point three million dollars. We've spent sixty-eight thousand so far. Okay, fine, but, you know, are we worried about something that we're not going to, we're going to run out of money in this area? Or, uh, you know, hey, we're not sure if the budget is right in this area? So it's really sort of just whatever can, can give us that visibility into, uh, you know, what it looks, because it's not going to be sort of a, hey, here's one point three, we're going to spend two hundred thousand each month, or, you know.
Exactly.
Right, so it's going to have some ebbs and flows, but we, we don't know what that's supposed to look like, so it's just kind of giving us any visibility into that.
And, uh, to some degree, this will be new territory for all of us. Um, and we really don't have much of a, of a, you know, the, the point of reference for us is something that's fifty years old. So, so I hear you loud and clear, I agree with you, and we'll,
Yeah.
we'll proceed together on this journey as we try to identify where the risks are. Oh, this was a surprise, we didn't account for this, we missed that, or, no, we still look good in that regard.
Yep.
Yeah.
Probably picking up on Cameron's point, it might be useful for you at some point to indicate what, how many funds have been committed. So if there's a contract or, or there's been a bid or some process that's, that's indicated what the expected spend is going to be out of those things, even if it hasn't come up yet, so that we could look at expended and committed and then re, recognize whether there was a delta or a shortfall.
Yeah, yes, that's good.
That's good.
That's a good point.
That's captured at the moment, just sort of reflected in the Communications and Publicity column, where funds expended do represent either dollars out the door or dollars that are contracted.
So it's both.
So it's both.
Very good.
And, um, I'll work with Shannon on this.
Very good.
Now, we'll, we're back and forth in terms of how, how best to do this, that works for the staff.
Okay.
Works for the committee and for the board as well.
Good, that's good to know, that that's expended and committed. Very good.
Okay.
Great.
And we understand that the executive board took a vote and wishes that we do create a gift account?
That is correct, right. So as reflected in the report to you, we had a awful vigorous discussion. Um, not everyone was in agreement, but that's okay. I, I was a little nervous when you had thirteen people around the table and everyone's always nodding their head, yes or no. Um, so there were some different points of view on this matter, but the majority of those who supported the motion, um, support the fact that we are coming to the select board to request a gift account, a town gift account be established for the purposes of the Concord Two-Fifty celebrations.
So just a question, um, to, because I know last, or a couple meetings ago, I, we, there was a presentation on the, I know it's a similar name, I don't know if it's the exact same name, uh, five oh one C. So it's, it's really more just like, if we establish this gift account, then we kind of have like two different groups out there. Like, how do, how do we think about that and kind of manage that? Or people who have already maybe donated, or companies that have already donated to one, um, I don't know, do you have thoughts? I mean, because I don't know the answer, but just.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a very good question. Um, one thought is, and this will require working with the town staff and the finance department in particular, who will be helping set up, right, process the paperwork to set up the gift account, is exactly the name that we choose for it. Um, because, as you point out, there is the potential for some confusion here. So the naming of this gift account is important. Two, there's good, that, whatever we do, there is still that risk of some confusion, and we're going to have to work hard to explain that what we're trying to do is offer a number of opportunities by which residents, businesses, others might, um, who might be interested in supporting the Concord Two-Fifty initiatives. There's ways to do that, um, that have, um, can be directed to whether it's the town gift account, to the nonprofit corporation. Those funds can be restricted for certain purposes and the like. So, yeah, we have some work cut out for us to explain how this will work, and, um, I envision that that will entail and will be effective in a lot of one-on-one conversations that will happen with individuals who may express interest in supporting this effort. And I see this as an opportunity to be able to say, well, here are ways in which you can direct your funds. And there are, you know, that, that may have appeal to the individuals involved.
Okay, so, so you're not ready actually right now, tonight, to ask us to open up that account because you don't know how you're going to name it? Do I understand that?
Well, I guess I would prefer that you go ahead and vote it with the understanding that, if you could do this in terms of vote, that there is an ability for us to craft, think further and, and actually craft with the name of what we, and how we describe it publicly.
Yeah, we can do it. This is the thing.
I mean, we, we can, but I just, are we positioning it differently from the thing that already exists in the sense of like, oh, hey, if you're, you know, there's a five oh one C three that's going to spend donation money on certain
Mm-hmm.
programs or events, this is going to be used for different purposes? Or, I guess my concern is if we end up with this thing that's sort of like dueling charities, like, hey, you know what, I want to hold an event, so give me my, well, I'm, I'm going and asking the same people for money, like, and it just, that's my worry, is that we end up with sort of two people trying to do the same.
So you're reflecting some of the conversation that took place within the executive committee?
Yeah.
And, and on, that's an example of, of the concern or the risk that will, could arise. And, um, I don't underestimate the challenge of that in terms of trying to explain it clearly, but what I've heard since that meeting, and based in part on subsequent follow-up by the local news media, Concord Bridge in particular, there were individuals who expressed an interest in knowing if there are other alternatives by which private gifts can be made to support the town's efforts. The town gift fund is a way to do that. I'm not personally, and I don't see this, nor do I want to be in a position where we're, you have these two entities, the nonprofit corporation and the town gift fund, um, competing with one another. I, I think that would be an unfortunate outcome. I, I, as I said before, I'm seeing this as, we're offering a number of ways or venues by which folks can contribute to this effort. Um, but I think what I said at the last meeting with the select board, you know, we, we are all working towards a common purpose, and there may be areas of focus that the corporation will want to, uh, direct its efforts and resources towards, and there may be others with, through the town gift account where that might happen. But, you know, I don't bring this matter to you with the, some underlying assumption that this is intended to be, um, you know, a battle for, for the resources. That would be a mistake. I mean, I don't want to get involved in that, I don't have the time for it, but it will more significantly, um, I think it will be off-putting for a lot of residents of the community to see that kind of tension exist. So.
If you could clearly articulate, um, the differences, or, you know, what would be the focus of one versus the focus of the other, I think that would help. I'm of the mind that the gift account is a good idea because the more ways we have people to contribute, the better. Um, the more likely we are to get funds, because I don't think one point three million is really going to cover it. Um, so anything that we can do to get more channels is, I think, a, a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
The challenge is, of course, is to be clear to people, and you're right, to not make it look like a competition. So that's, you're going to have to finesse that.
Yes.
Okay. So, are we ready for a vote?
Can you, are you going to vote to create a gift account?
We are.
Is that?
Can we do that?
Okay, so I think you can. Um, from a staff perspective, we do need to understand the parameters under which the funds can be spent. We also need some sort of statement about what happens to any remaining balance. So it, it could be as simple as, um, we're going to use the, the gift fund before we use any other funds, um, but, but we do need to understand what happens with any remaining balance. And I will just mention, we have a three hundred and seventy fi, seventy-fifth gift fund for the, the birthday event in twenty twelve with a balance of about twenty-eight thousand dollars that we have been working with legal to try to understand, and the Attorney General's Office to try to understand what, if anything, we can do with those funds. And so we don't want to be in that position again.
So I have, I have an idea about that. Um, in the conversation that I heard, there, there was quite a debate at the two-hundred-and-fiftieth meeting, and, and all of these issues came up. And it seems to me that when we're looking at the budget that Gary just presented, um, these items that are in this budget would be eligible for funding in the town gift account, whereas what I think I've heard from the corporation people is that they might fund additional items that are not necessarily listed here, such as a program was one of the ones that I heard, a, a nice brochure that would be given out. Um, so I don't think that the corporation is specific yet, and they're going to have some meetings coming up where they decide that. But I think that we could specify in our town gift account that these items here, like communications and publicity, benefit, um, events and programs, you know, these items that are in this budget would be eligible for funding in this two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration gift account.
How specific do we have to be?
I don't think you have to be that specific. We just need some general parameters.
Do you think this table that we have here that lists the communications and publicity, events and programs, would that, would that be sufficient? And then?
I think that would be helpful. I'm, I'm just wondering if, if you wanted to take a vote to set up a, set up an account and, and ask that staff work with the committee on a statement of purpose?
That's fine.
And we could bring that back to you with the next meeting.
I would like that to, like you just said, like some sort of statement of purpose, where possible, and I understand, at least from what I saw from the presentation on the other five oh one C three, they didn't necessarily have it tightly defined, but they were going to do it.
Right, but they don't need to.
And where possible, how it would be positioned relative to the other five oh one C three, like, I mean, I know that's not going to be, that's going to be art, not science, but, um, I just think it'd be important if we can try to nail the specifics, or at least the direction.
Yep, I agree, and I would add to Carrie's earlier, add to that Carrie's earlier point, which is if there are any unexpended funds within this account
Yes.
as of, um, um, July fourth, twenty twenty-six, when there's, it's
Yeah.
when the executive committee is done. Um, anyway, that those would then be, could be used for public charitable purposes, I'll have to work on the language,
Right.
but it's to avoid the problem that happened in
Twenty-twelve.
Twenty, right, that. So it's clear that the town is authorized now to be able to use those unexpended funds for presumably some municipal public purposes, whatever.
I guess I'm feeling that I'd like to see that before we vote.
I kind of would too.
I would like to see, what's the statement of purpose and exactly how these unexpend, funds would be allocated? Because I would just like to see that before we establish it.
It would also be helpful to see some guidelines on how you're going to differentiate the two funds.
Yes.
I'm still, it's still concerning to me, and probably to the committee as well. But I think it's really important that we're clear about that
Yes.
before we start this gift account.
I think we're, you know, we're dealing with a controllable entity and an outside entity.
Yeah.
We're dealing with a controllable entity and an outside entity. So, we can control what we can control.
Right.
My proposal would be that we authorize the expenditure to be in accordance with the adopted budgets of the Concord 250 Committee. So, the types of line items that we're, that we're seeing here, communications and publicity, events and hospitality, hospitality and invitation, the parade, the public safety, those, those types of things. And if they amended their budget in future, then that would be part of a public process. And then I think that the sort of realistic, then we can look back at the sources of revenues for this, that's funding those activities now, and look at where we could potentially return unexpended funds. And it seems to me that the two choices are to either adopt a policy where they would be donated to something charitable, like the Hugh Carville Trust, or tax relief, or something like that, could go into affordable housing, or possibly just very simply return to free cash, since we're already expending $350,000 of free cash. So, it would be tax relief.
I would recommend putting it into the ceremonies and celebrations budget line item on the, in the town budget.
For the future.
Yes, because it's a natural fit.
That's another
And it offsets property taxes.
Sensible one, too. Yeah.
But if you're establishing the gift account for this, this is a question I don't know.
Yeah.
If you're establishing a gift account for this purpose, can you then say, well, if I have unexpended funds, I can sort of use it for something that's totally unrelated?
No, that's what we're discussing. I think Mary's pointing about celebrations and ceremonies. Then it's like a future years 251st celebration.
I mean, you could just keep it more general. So, unexpended funds that can be used for other public purposes per the approval of the select board. I'm not sure how much we can try to define this in a more narrow way at this point.
I'm feeling we have to define it to set up the account. I thought we had to.
I think we need some general guidance. And I feel like we've heard enough here about your concerns that we can go back and craft something that will meet what you're looking for.
So, is there anything, I'm hearing a sense that we should maybe see that
Yes.
with now and then vote next time?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. Did you have anything else that you wanted?
I just wanted to highlight that on August 11th.
Good.
We have a major kickoff event. So, yes, it's the middle of August, but it's a lovely time in Concord. But it's
It is.
very intentionally planned and designed to reflect that. We'll mark the 250 days that remain before April 19th, 2025. So, there's a series of public events that'll take place here in the center. We're doing this in conjunction with the Concord Museum. There'll be a lot of information and publicity about this, including through the Concord Bridge, as well as online. But it's an event that will take place, again, here between 5:30 and 7:30 PM at the museum. And when I say here, I should be clear, at the museum. And Mission to the Museum is free that day, and so forth and so on. So, it's a chance to the community to come together during a lovely summer evening
August 11th.
and celebrate, if you will, sort of. We've launched the 250th programs and events and activities. But this is an event that will highlight the fact that April 19th is just around the corner. Who's counting, right?
That's right. 250.
It's 250 days before April 19th, right?
That's correct.
Awesome.
So, it's August 11th at the Concord Museum. Did I hear that?
Right. Yep.
What time?
From 5:30 to 7:30 PM.
Thank you.
And more information, we'll obviously make sure the board has more details about that. And again, we'll be publicizing this through various media outlets.
That's great. Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Next, the Finance Committee. Come up, do you want to come up, Eric? Please.
Yeah.
Okay, now we might have to share.
I know.
Bring your friends.
What?
I'm probably going to miss the next meeting. I'm flying back that day. I'm supposed to fly back the day these two.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Concord Museum.
Yeah. Are you missing the next meeting?
On the 22nd. I'm just not sure if I can be here first.
Same here. I'm flying back.
I'm flying back in the morning, or the early afternoon.
Yeah.
I just, I'm not sure if I'm going to make it.
Yeah.
I'm flying back.
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 Those, for sure, we need to review. I think we had probably a good practice in place years ago that has, through transitions, through some ups and downs with the RECC revolving fund in terms of its level of health, there have been some changes, and we're trying to get back to a good and better practice for maintenance.
I'm going to open it up to the select board, and then I'll turn it over and open it up for comments and questions from the thing. Is that okay, Eric? Okay.
Yeah, so just a question. So if it's a couple million bucks, about how much comes into the fund each year from what sources?
Yeah, so it's fees associated with programming, Jess or Lee? Or I'm not sure if anybody wants to speak to that any more specifically.
They whispered in my ear. About a million dollars comes in in fees.
In fees, okay. And so the rest of the balance is just a surplus that has built up over time, including some funding that recreation received throughout the pandemic for operating a childcare facility.
Yeah, so a million bucks comes in, and we spend 750 on maintenance. The balance builds 250 a year. We now got a couple million bucks. Is that sort of...
Yeah.
Direction of travel.
We definitely are taking in more in fees than we are expensing. Not that we don't have the expenses, but we're not... I don't think we're accurately capturing the expenses.
So when we were talking earlier, and I use the term fees and chargebacks, I think this is what I was talking about, that, you know, I don't know what terminology you want to use for it, but I think our aim, I think we all agree that our aim is that these programs shouldn't make a profit and that they should pay for themselves. Is that what you try to do when you set the fees and allocate them, maintenance costs to them?
Revolving funds, the fees should be capturing the cost
Right.
of the service provided, and not more, actually.
So that is, I think, what I was talking about earlier when we were doing the goals. That is the goal that we added about making sure that everything's up to date with all of this.
Well, that's a follow-on question I have. Is the surplus in this revolving fund because we're charging too much or we're not paying our fair share of the operating and maintenance costs?
So there isn't anything prohibiting a community from subsidizing activities. I have worked in communities where the policy regarding recreation is that adult recreation programs capture, the fees capture 100% of the costs, and youth recreation, it's something else. So there isn't anything prohibiting us from subsidizing. I think it's not... It is difficult to answer the question, the exact question that you're asking. I think we are not accurately capturing the maintenance costs associated with recreation from the recreation revolving fund. Whether that means that we're charging fees appropriately or not, I don't think we have the data yet to answer that.
Okay. But we could start by actually seeing what it really costs to run.
Yes, and that is the work that we're doing now and again. It has been, it's been over a protracted period of time because of changes in staff.
Okay.
Right, plus I thought I heard you say also the surplus was built up due to ARPA.
Well, not ARPA, but I believe the recreation received some funding through the pandemic to support the childcare program that was open. I don't know what the exact amount was, but it was something.
So Carrie, last year when we did our capital planning, there were a lot of projects that were sort of potential coming from the revolving fund, from recreation. Are those at risk? If we have $2 million, maybe not, but is there any concern in this discussion that we would not pay for the cost of those projects? And I don't know if it's maintenance, so some of it might have been resurfacing of, I don't know, I'm gonna say a basketball court. That's just an example. But there were a number of projects that were delineated as possible, possibly funded through the revolving fund.
We haven't made any decisions on funding additional maintenance costs through recreation. And, you know, I'd like to introduce Assistant Town Manager Jess Porter, our RECC Director Lee Jackson. I mean, feel free to jump in on this conversation. So we had some projects in the capital plan. Those have been funded. There were other projects that were not funded with a note that they would potentially be funded through the RECC revolving fund or other sources. We haven't made any decisions on that yet because we're still talking through an appropriate assessment to recreation.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. But the intention would be, you know, I always acquit the revolving fund. It's not an enterprise fund, but we want it to act a little bit like that. So it should cover its costs and have some reserve for maintenance. That's how it... I mean, ideally, that's what I would hope we could achieve.
Well, so under this bylaw, it's required. If we were operating under... There are two revolving fund statutes for recreation under Mass General Law. If we were operating under those, fund balance would have to be returned to the general fund. So because we are operating under a bylaw that requires that the fund cover operations and maintenance, we need to be covering maintenance.
Yep, got it. Any other questions from the select?
Just one more quick question about maintenance. By maintenance, do you mean also depreciation for, you know, future capital expenses? Like the... Yeah, like for example, that major renovation of Emerson Field, that kind of project.
So what I think is probably most appropriate in this case is that there be a fee assigned for the use of different recreational facilities, and that fee take into account the cost of current and future, current maintenance and future replacement, that be taken into consideration.
Great.
So if it's used for maintenance, it can be used for capital projects?
Well, maintenance, I would read maintenance to include in the... So a basketball court, you know, maintenance at some point, I think, includes resurfacing.
Yeah, for tennis courts, swimming pools. It's also probably worth noting, just in case anybody's watching, is that the BD Fund, the BD Swimming Fitness operates as a separate enterprise
Good point.
from what we're talking about.
Yes, good point.
And has its own funding requirements and budget. But then there are some things that are, like the after-school programs, which tend to share town facilities, there's not exclusive... So it's easy to identify the Hunt Gym or the pool at the Emerson Field as being exclusively recreation facilities, but something like Harvey Wheeler operates half the building as a preschool and after-school program, I think is still there. And then, so in those cases, the cost recovery, and this is where I would agree with Terry's word of chargeback schemes, need to be sort of worked out to reflect that, you know, so council on aging programs are using part of the building and public meetings are using other parts. So it becomes a little fuzzy exactly who needs to pay for what, and those are the kinds of things that I think Carrie is referring to when she says that over time, there's been a little bit of drift associated with that in terms of who was taking responsibility for it.
So I just have one more question. So whose decision is it? So like, in my mind, like you have a revolving fund, and it's probably good that you have a little bit of cushion, right? You know, you've kind of built up something in case of emergency, in case there's a maintenance project, but then you get to wait, oh, we got $2 million there. That feels like more than we maybe need. This is kind of like sitting around. So who decides? Who can go say, hey, look, I want you to spend a million of that or a million and a half of that, and, you know, here's how we're gonna do that?
So I think right now, we're trying to come to collaborate and come to an agreement that feels right for everybody.
And who are the people that are part of that decision-making group?
Well, so right now, we're working at a staff level to come to a proposal that I would assume RECC staff would then want to bring to the RECC Commission for some feedback. And I'm hoping we can collaborate and come up with a win-win solution.
Okay, Finance Committee questions will start on this side of the table. There are 13 of us, so we'll try to move fast.
Carrie, you mentioned that you felt that the expenses weren't being fully captured. What steps are being taken to deal with that? How complicated will it be? Because it's a little difficult to make some of the decisions about what to do with the surplus and how to manage the fees if you don't really have a handle on the expenses that are being incurred.
Right, so the work we're doing now is to understand what the expense is, because these facilities, fields, courts, et cetera, for the most part, they're used by multiple... They're used by recreation, they're used by other groups, youth sports groups, they're used by the general public. So we need to understand what the cost of maintenance and upkeep is and what the appropriate assignment would be to each of the different groups. We're certainly not trying to send 100% of the expense of anything to recreation because the general public has access to these facilities. So that's the process we're going through now to identify specifically what the cost is and then what the appropriate share split would be.
Pass. Members of the select board have been asked questions.
Is there a... This question's kind of already been asked, but is there a target range? Is there a floor and a ceiling to the balance in the fund? To me, when I heard $2 million, that just seems higher than I would have thought, given the overall financial condition of the town. Is there a policy on a max and a minimum?
There is not a stated policy. What I would say is I think you have to take into account what would happen if the Town of Concord decided not to offer recreation anymore? What liability would be assigned to that fund? If we stopped programs, we're not going to have program expense. So I know I've heard in, throughout my career, recreation director might want three months' worth of costs, six months' worth of costs. I think you have to decide what liability remains if the program stops and then decide what is an appropriate level of fund balance.
Thank you, Carrie. I hope in the work that you are doing at the staff level, we'll have an inventory. Basically, I guess I'm thinking of an inventory of what are the assets which you attribute or, you know, apply to the recreation function or department. Obviously, Emerson Field, I mean, that's a real, it's a community facility. There's public works involved in a lot of the facilities as well, so it sounds very complicated to me. I'm also interested in what is the... I didn't quite catch it, I think maybe Tony was mentioning it, what the annual inflow, net inflow to the revolving fund is. Is it generally even, break even, or was that a million? I'm thinking of net inflow. So if you're running at a positive number, that revolving fund would increase over time, even without the COVID uptick. And the target balance, that was also a question. So, and I know there are a lot of scholarships, you know, for summer camp, for after-school, so there are substantial community benefits. But I guess I'd be interested in inventory of the facilities, you know, on a spreadsheet, and also the net inflow under current and proposed operations.
Question I have, have you thought about other revenue generating opportunities through recreation, besides what you already have for the RECC fund?
So I would defer that question to either the RECC staff or the RECC Commission. Okay, maybe you should move over here.
So the question that was asked was, are there any other recreation revenue opportunities that are under consideration at the moment?
Would you please come sit up here? Please, so we can...
Hello, good evening. Thank you. My name's Lee Jackson. I'm the recreation director here in town, and I'll tell you that, yes, I have lots of ideas. Since I'm fairly new to town, I want to take my first year to get a better sense of what's working for us and what's not, but we always want to stay relevant, and so we'll always continue to think about adding new programs for fees. And one of the ideas I have now is a nature program. So nature education, science education, we could do something like that here. And we have blue highways or blue trails as well.
Response to a couple of questions that come out here. There's always opportunities to create more revenue and run more programs, but they often, again, you create more revenue to run a program, you have those expenses that come with it. So there are not a lot of opportunities out there to sort of long-term impact on that fund just by raising revenues because you have the complementary increase in expenses if we run more programs. I will say that we have asked Lee and her staff, and they've done a great job of sort of benchmarking what we do against other communities in terms of the costs of some of our programs. We looked at them all quite thoroughly in the last couple of months and talked about some increases to some of the fees that we thought were appropriate. I would say that the question that you're asking is absolutely the right one. We 100% support looking at this question because rationalizing how you spend the money and what you're spending it on has been the hardest challenge I've had coming to recreation group, to just understand how does it all work? It's a very complex matrix. And what I would hope that you would be able to do when you ask these questions is let's understand those expenses and fees, and let's have a conversation that's explicit about what we choose to subsidize as a town, as opposed to having it just be in the mix and the mesh. Because ultimately, recreational resources and the residents of this town love them, they want them, they want access to those programs, but let's be explicit and understand how we're subsidizing it rather than have it be confused and have to come back and understand it, you know, from just looking at an account balance and moving some money around. That doesn't really answer the question. So I applaud the town manager's effort, and we have encouraged Lee to work very closely with all of the partners at Natural Resources, the school department, Public Works, to figure out how are all these expenses covered so that we can have that conversation rationally rather than in the abstract.
Carrie, I'm looking for an example. So for example, the Concord Recreation Department, you go online, you sign up for a course, the fee gets paid, and the service gets delivered from Hunt Gym. When the fee gets paid, does that revenue go into the revolving fund or is there a separate account for fee revenue?
So it goes into the revolving fund?
So everything that's collected from those programs goes into the revolving fund?
Yes.
And then the building is gonna have paint and light and...
So utility expenses for the various buildings get paid out of that account as well?
I'm not sure I can answer that off the top of my head. I do think some expenses are being paid, but probably not all that are associated with the cost of providing the program, and that's what we're trying to capture.
Thank you.
Question, you had mentioned that you need to get a handle on the expenses, right? Because there are, in all these things, there are annual expenses that are fixed, and then there are these one-off expenses. So are we going to map that out? Because like, for example, paving the court or changing the basketball, you know, the hoop, so is that part of your plan? Because that'll affect your revolving fund, you know, as you go forward.
Yeah, so that is what we are trying to map. And I should say, you know, we have a similar issue with some of the facilities at the schools, and we've started some of those conversations as well with Dr. Hunter, probably not in the last few months, but we've had some of those conversations where we have public works staff maintaining certain facilities, and we're not... I think one thing that we're not good at doing in government is assigning costs and understanding the true cost of different services, and that's what we're trying to do to make sure that we can, you know, just be mindful about what the costs are and make decisions, actively make decisions about whether or not we're going to change or we're going to subsidize and just be mindful of that.
This is your last question. Karen, could you please just talk a little bit about personnel? How many full-time people do you have who are in the recreation department and are their town employees, I would assume? And then, from a part-time standpoint? Good, okay. From a part-time standpoint, how many people do you hire? And are those, are their costs covered by the fees? Or how does all of this work in terms of employees?
So I'll tell you, we have about 20 full-time employees.
20?
Yes. And we have the teachers, although if I added them, it's 25 probably. And then we have, we hire roughly 100, almost 100 staff during the summer to get ready for summer camp. So that's just a look at a snapshot at a season, but as you can imagine, there's seasonality with all of our programming, but it's all covered in the revolving fund. So all the staff salaries are covered in the revolving fund.
And benefits.
And benefits.
Okay. So the part-time employees, are they town employees or are they just hires to provide a service?
They are absolutely town employees, and we're very proud of them.
They are town employees. All right, thank you.
We do have one member online. Paul's got his hand raised. Paul?
Hi, so your challenges seem to reflect needing a capital plan, and I would urge to look at all the expenses that could exist and then, like, in a certain timeframe, and kind of identify what could happen and what needs to happen. And that would facilitate a discussion of how much the revolving fund should pay, what portion of it, because if it's a shared asset, they don't necessarily need to pay the whole thing. In other things that I've done, it seems that, like, having that capital plan and looking forward without necessarily the bounds of identifying the total costs can at least facilitate the good conversations between the various stakeholders.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I think that it would be really helpful if we understood the asset value of the recreation assets that we're talking about. So how much is the replacement cost of the Emerson Pool, the tennis courts in Emerson, the ride-out tennis courts?
I think we're getting now into the strategic plan?
Those kinds of things.
Which is a different, the next topic? Okay, so can you hold that thought until we talk about that? Okay, I'd like to close this out.
In terms of understanding the revolving fund, it's important to understand what assets it might be responsible for maintaining before we start to say a million or $2 million is too much or too little.
Okay.
Can I just ask a very quick question? Carrie, how, what is your timeframe, do you think, for doing all of this analysis and reporting back?
Yeah, so end of the summer. That's the marching orders to staff. We need to go into the next budget process with these questions answered.
Great, thank you.
So I think we've agreed during this conversation that the revolving fund, the balance right now is really too high. It's not being, it's not being used the way the bylaw is...
It's too high based on the way it's being used right now.
Because it's not being used appropriately.
And I will mention, it's been flagged in our audit for the last several years as wanting, you know, what is the plan for this funding? And again, we're not looking to overassign costs or just spend that down on anything. We're looking to come up with a solid plan that can support the fees that are being charged for the programming.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next item, which is the analysis that you had done of your facilities. So I think we all read the executive summary of that and also the recommendations. So I'd just like to start this by saying that I was very encouraged to read that the Town of Concord has more recreational assets than similar towns in the country, that 98% of the people within Concord use the assets we have, well over 70% use them frequently. I found this very encouraging. I was also very encouraged to hear the survey that you said that you ran, well over, I think it was up to 60% of the people thought that we had enough assets, so recreational assets. And so those were some of the takeaways that I took from reading the executive summary. So I'd like to start by just asking the people from the RECC Commission what were their takeaways from the study, and then I'll open it up for comments and questions. So...
Thank you. So I'd start by saying when we did this study, we were looking at all of the facilities that we knew about in town regardless of whether they were under the direct control of the Recreation Commission. So some of them are responsibility of the Natural Resources Commission. The school department, it's a broad, complex matrix, but we asked the question broadly. Because as a resident, you don't necessarily care which bureaucracy maintains control of those projects. So we asked the question broadly, which I think was effective. We did have an excellent response from the community, so I think you'll find that that it's well documented in the numbers that we had. Those are very pleased with that result. And I think you're right. The general highest level message from this is that we have a wealth of recreational resources. People like them, they use them, and they're generally happy with what we have. I think that's absolutely the 100% take-home message. We did find they were asking the same question that many of you were asking about maintenance and upkeep. There is a lot of questions about who does it, how does it happen, when does it get done? And I would echo the statements we heard here that you have to think about that in a very long-term capital maintenance concept. Because the expense of maintaining capital facilities, $2 million gets eaten up very quickly if you look at those things. And people are cognizant of the fact that we have fallen behind a little bit on some of our maintenance questions. So it's the right time to be asking that question and rationalizing what's going on. I do think you're right as well. We did benchmark it against surrounding communities and we do very well in those benchmarks. So the high-level answer is that we are in good shape. I think there's a couple of things that also came out of there is that there is, and of course, when you ask the question in the abstract and you ask for people's visions, they would support lots of new things coming in town. But that's not asking the concept of money for this versus money versus something else. It's an abstract concept and we understand that. So this is not, we didn't go into this trying to create a wish list of things that we wanted to build. We wanted to understand what does the community care about and what would their priorities be while we have conversations with all of our partners and understand what's possible, how we might do these things. So it creates this sort of aspirational vision of the things that might be beneficial to the community, not a specific wish list of funding on any particular project. I do think there were a couple of other very interesting observations as well that came out of it. That there's a lot of people who are very interested in an opportunity that I personally think is out there. And that's access to the water resources we have in this town, right? We have these rivers running through town that you can't really get to as much as you'd like. And a lot of people talk to us about creating access to the rivers as something that would be very beneficial to the town. So we're very interested in working particularly with our partners at the Natural Resources Commission to understand what does that mean? What's involved with that? How might that work, right? So we intend to sort of initiate looking at that in partnership with the Natural Resource Commission. What would that mean? How would it work? What would it mean for the town? I think there's also an opportunity to look at the, at the very basic level, all the playing fields that we have in town and rationalizing how do people get access to those? How do we understand how much those, in combination with how much does it cost? Are we using those fields as best that we can? Are there other opportunities that we should be looking at? Do people know who to call to get permits? Some very basic things. So we've asked the staff to start talking to all of the people who use these fields, all the youth sports organizations, all the organizations. Let's get a better handle of what we're actually using these fields for and have a rationale for talking about how we might improve how we manage that process. Those are two very much sort of in-the-weeds, but very specific recommendations that came out of the report that we're interested in pursuing in the short term. As you sort of look up at a broader picture, I do think what we also recognized in looking at the studies is that people do care a lot about the recreational assets. And what's brought a lot of us to this town is access to many of those recreational assets. And as you think about as a board of selectmen and the various organizations in town, as you begin to think about the really big picture opportunities in front of this community. MCI Concord, 2229 Main Street. And you think about the recreational needs of the town, that you keep recreation in mind as you have those conversations. Because when you are talking about those big-picture planning opportunities, that's when the opportunities present themselves to do some really interesting things. I think I'm particularly interested, the conversation started out, as we're going there, when you look at what's happening at, what may happen at MCI Concord. There's a recreational corridor through there from Warner's Pond, Jarrow Park, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, connectivity across Route 2. Let's keep that in mind as we think about all the things that we're going to be doing out there in the future. And let's not miss the opportunity to take advantage of this tremendous recreational corridor that already exists. And let's think about how we can improve that, make better access to it, and really use that resource to enhance whatever it is we're going to do in the long term, those places. So in summary, we have wonderful resources, people love them and they use them. There are great opportunities to continue to expand and rationalize that use. But that conversation takes place with partners across the municipal organizations with all of you. We look forward to doing that. We're thrilled to have Lee and her staff on board now to help us go through some of that process. And we look forward to a more rational understanding of how we fund all this stuff in the coming months so that we can then come back to you with more specific ideas about what shouldn't, shouldn't be done. If you have any questions, other members of the committee are here as well.
Thank you.
We're very pleased with the study. It's a great result. And keep it available, keep it in your mind as you think about all the things that we're doing on the big picture. Because it really is an excellent study of what the people of this community would like to see if they had the opportunity.
I think we are keeping those things in mind when we look at MCI in particular because we have that beautiful riverfront along the Aspet there as part of that parcel. So we are thinking of that. But I do need to remind you that in the last few years, the town has spent over $10 million on recreational assets, including White Pond, Jarrow, improvements we've made at Emerson and improvements we've made at Ride Out. And we've got a lot of other capital needs right now that are priorities, that are kind of urgent. The roads, we've talked about the roads tonight, we've talked about, we've been talking for years about DPW facility, we've been talking for years about public safety. So I just want to keep that in mind, that I think recreation has been funded pretty well in the last few years. So yes, certainly I think I'm open to thinking longer term, but I just wanted to remind you of that. What about anything from the slackboard? Any questions?
Paul Bohm, Ridgewood Road Recreation Commission member. I agree completely that we have bountiful recreation assets. I think a lot of the plan focuses on optimizing what we have.
Good.
Because they're not optimized. We seem to have a lot more playing fields, but the soccer community can't use them or aren't using them. Why? So we have to take a look at that. There's a big demand for pickleball all over town. We have tennis courts, there's a lot of competition. How can we optimize the use of that? Really, the pickleball community's?
You got a pickleball friend?
Okay, there you go. So I think, I think the investments going forward have to be very focused on optimizing and just fulfilling the most important needs that the community has. And Phil mentioned water access, pickleball, the very specific assets. So we're not completely done on recreation, but we are, we have a lot to build on. And I think we have a great department with great programs, ever-expanding programs to build on that.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, comments from the slackboard?
No, just that I think it's absolutely fantastic that you're looking to optimize the assets that we do have. For years, I've always heard we need more fields, we need more fields because people just don't know how to optimize their use. So that's fantastic. So I think that's great. Good luck with trying to do that. No, I think it's great. It's complex.
Yeah, no questions, just thank you. I mean, it's a lot of work, it's a comprehensive report. I think it gives not necessarily complete blueprint, but like an outline of what the opportunities are. And then, you know, it's on all of us to work on the prioritization and how we're gonna, you know, sort of take this and use it going forward. So just a big shout out to everybody who is involved.
And I think it's just right to recognize that there are some changes coming in the pipeline. You mentioned them already, 2229 Main Street, MCI Concord, what the disposition of Warner's Pond ends up being and the sort of stand-up of the Jarrow facility are all things that are already underway. And I know that each of those groups is entertaining what their recreation impacts and it's probably mostly passive recreation in those points. But, you know, we shouldn't miss those opportunities anyway even recognizing that there's been a lot of investment made already.
Okay, questions from FinCom, starting with Dee on that side of the table?
And the last should be first.
And the last should be first. I wonder if, from the, my question is for the recreation chairperson over here. If you've contacted the Audubon Society, and I'm saying this specifically about canoes and kayaks because they have put in, along the river, they have put in a dock where people can just bring their kayaks and they'll also have some. And I thought you might, and I can't think of the guy's name who's in charge of it, but you may want to contact them just as an outreach.
We have not, to my knowledge, directly spoken to Mass Audubon yet, but part of looking at water access is to talk to those people who've done it in other places and are doing it now nearby. So we certainly will do that.
Okay.
We got quite a lot of input from the Oars Group on the study as well, who have done a lot of work about looking at water access as well.
Good, thanks.
I guess I'm just wondering what the immediate next steps are and kind of the timeline for what we should expect, you know, in terms of going from this plan to something more actionable.
I think there's a couple of things that we specifically will likely do, the sort of low-hanging fruit, I think, out the door. Most likely, looking at the CPC as a way of funding a study for what they call rectangular field use. That's the jargon in the recreation world for playing fields, right? Actually looking at that, how do we optimize the use of playing fields? I think we will probably potentially ask as well for some funding to look at aquatic resources and how to do feasibility studies, small amounts of money to actually initiate that. And potentially to look at optimizing Jarrow Park. I think those are the three that jump out at us as the three low-hanging fruits, so to speak, coming out of this study that match some of the broad themes that we heard in the study and are opportunities that are timely. We look forward to hearing, I understand next week there's a conversation about Jarrow Park coming up. We will be here to listen, to understand. So whatever we do is building upon the work that's been done and is done in tandem with the Warner's Pond Task Course as well. Because I really don't think you can separate those two resources. It doesn't make sense to separate those two resources. So I think those are the three things out the door that we'll probably be doing.
The Recreation Commission took a site visit of the Peabody School. And during that Peabody School site visit that I attended, I remember hearing how much the Recreation Commission wanted to save the field and maybe the gym, but maybe not. Peabody School is something we have not talked about. Peabody School is also a revenue generator potentially. Has the Recreation Commission or the town manager's office made any initial thoughts about what to do with Peabody School? Because it is mentioned in your strategic plan.
We did take a site visit out there because the concept of a building that was, had some recreational uses in it might be something that could be repurposed. I think our initial response is that the opportunity there is with the beautiful playing fields and putting those into the circulation of the group. I don't think the consensus of us was, I think the cost that would be associated with repurposing a school that is being taken down or used for other things right now is probably not the highest priority that we would look at. So I don't think you'll see a lot of push from us to look at that building per se, but I think the fields should be part of our field use study. Because there's a couple of beautiful ones down there that are underutilized. But I think the consensus of what we got from that is looking at the condition of the building and the costs that would be associated with kind of repurposing that is probably not the wisest investment at the moment. It was excellent that we were able to do a visit in partnership with the school committee and look at that, but I think that was the good version that we came to.
And I would just add from the town side, we also did a site visit. We took in what we saw and we're processing it.
Just tying this back to the revolving fund and its current balance. And Carrie, you talked about, you know, studying the expense flow versus the inflow. So I think it seems like you want to get to kind of a break even, you know, bring in as much money as you expensed to the Rec Commission, which is going to leave the revolving fund at $2 million. So pushing these things together, it would, to me, I think, you know, the low-hanging fruit or the next steps, how do those relate to drawing down the revolving fund to an appropriate number that you're looking to determine? In other words, we don't want to saddle the Recreation Department with all sorts of expenses in order to draw down that fund. We want it to be smoothly breaking even, but look at some uses of that revolving fund to draw it down that are, I guess, more one-time things.
Yeah, so I wish I had a better answer for you other than this is the work that we are doing this summer. What I will say again is we're not looking to assign costs to the rec revolving fund that aren't appropriate. And it may be that the part of the recommendation is that we need to look at reducing fees associated with rec programs for some period of time or permanently after we take into account what expenses should be assigned, what is an appropriate ongoing fund balance, and what revenues are being generated on a regular basis.
For the fields, is optimizing going to provide a ability to get more revenue, you know, basically seeing, oh, this field is underused, you know, 80% of the day? And is that under the Recreation Department or?
Sort of. We do a lot of the programming of the fields, while we don't maintain or own them. But a lot of the scheduling comes here. One of the things we've asked the staff to do is get everybody in a room together who has a piece of this scheduling and fee puzzle and let's talk about what works and what doesn't work and figure out a way of doing it. I do think there are revenue opportunities for outside sports groups and youth sports groups that they already bring a lot of money in, maybe we should be looking at that. Those are the questions as well about who subsidizes who when you look at, you know, outside sports groups, youth sports groups versus the cost of running summer camps for kids, those sorts of things. And you want to look at those expenses. I think eliminating or sort of drastically reducing is probably not the right thing. People like, there should be some sense of paying a fee towards the program that you're getting and making those subsidies and who pays and who doesn't explicit rather than trying to 100% align every single cost with every single expense is the way to look at it. But there are certainly opportunities that we would look at.
No questions? You've been talking about playing fields. What about the Doug White fields? Is that under your responsibility and what are your thoughts on that?
To my knowledge, it is not under our responsibility. We have a role to play in that we schedule it at some time, but we don't actually run any programs that use that facility. We don't own it, we don't have management responsibility for it, but we do do some programming. But I do think one of the things that we had discussed at our meeting this morning was talking to you all about it. I think it's time to call the question about what are we going to do with that field so that we can appropriately put that resource into any analysis we do of how many fields? We have, how much are they used, how often are they used? What are the revenue opportunities? So I think it's the right time that we look forward to participating in that conversation with you.
Great, good. I'd love to see that used. And it also requires quite a bit of investment because it has artificial turf that I've heard is in bad condition and will be expensive to remove. But that's, now let's just see how we could use it better.
Personally, I believe you want to put together a small committee that has us, the school department, and maybe someone from the health department to talk about what are the uses of this field and what are the options, what are the costs associated with it? I do think it's a wonderful balancing question to ask because those artificial turf fields give you great opportunities for longer seasons, more use, et cetera. There are challenges with the materials and the long-term maintenance of them. So I think we need to have that conversation now because that's part of what you need to know to do the longer plan.
Exactly, it fits in with your use of, okay, great, thank you, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on now to the discussion of pilot programs. Anthony, you gave us in our packet and I think the FinCom saw it as well. I think you gave us what the town of Brookline uses?
Yes, exactly.
And then I think following that was your initial draft of what you thought might be our policy? Can you help me understand what we saw in our packet?
Sure, so in the packet was included was the Brookline policy. So it wasn't something that it was?
that I was proposing, it was something that could be a good starting point, working off of what Brookline had. There were some good things that, you know, I read in this that I felt really pertain to Concord, and some of the challenges that we have. You know, as far as, you know, why the Brookline Select Board did this is, they recognize that the town provides a bunch of critical services, police, fire, and public works, and those services are used by residents, commercial, as well as nonprofits, but the burden is really on the taxpayers to pick that up. And municipal budgets really just becoming tighter and tighter, you're seeing a lot of communities do proposition two-and-a-half overrides, and I think that what Concord's doing is wise and looking at something like this with payment in lieu of taxes with pilots on. So with that, this is a good foundation for something that we can build upon and then tailor it to Concord. And then, Select Board adopts a policy like this that we can go and negotiate with the nonprofits to try to get some kind of contribution to, in order to maintain those critical services that we provide.
You saw that it's one of our goals.
It is one of the goals, and I remember interviewing Mary with you, and that was loud and clear that pilots was a priority, so.
Great.
It's something that, right away, I sent that to Carrie, I think, the first week I was here, and we were getting it ready after the budget season to talk about it, and after town meeting, and here we are.
Okay, I'll open it up. Any questions, comments?
If we were to take a sample of towns, you know, that have some sort of similar demographics to Concord, how common is this, that towns would have this program? See, Brookline does, but...
It depends on the community, Cameron, so I worked in another community up in the North Shore, and we had a college too there, and I was trying to work with them, who were making really good progress, and then all of a sudden the pandemic hit. So I think it really depends on the community, because not all communities have a large number of nonprofits in their community, so. Concord certainly does, Brookline certainly does, with the colleges that they have and the hospitals, so it's not a cookie cutter for every community, it really depends.
I think it's important for us to outline an approach to this. I also think it's important to recognize that we do have a diverse set of institutions here. In terms of town services, we even have some for which the support for the educational, because they have onsite residences, which provide children into the school system, represents a town service that we would also potentially need some support for. However, there are also some relatively longstanding traditions about the types of supports, different ones of the community institutions have provided to the town in the past, and, you know, are often interested in continuing to provide. So I think it's a conversation that's important to revisit what the history with institutions here in Concord has been. We have, you know, almost like committees, we have a lot of institutions that have property of one kind or another, and they are vastly different from each other. And so I think it's going to be challenging to come up with anything that looks like one size fits all in this, and so I would just encourage making sure that we've sort of studied up on this before we get going.
I'm really encouraged to see this, and I think we should keep working on it. I do think we have to be realistic that it's a multi-year project. I know previous town manager, Chris Whalen, had worked on it for almost a decade, so it's really going to be challenging, and whatever we can do to help, because, I mean, like Mark just said, I think these institutions, they do use town services. We don't need to make any profit from them, but again, we should just try to recover our costs and not have the taxpayers be paying for that.
Thanks, I guess when I read this, I thought it was an interesting place to start, but I also reflected that Concord has a lot of institutions that are unique to Concord, and some of those institutions provide a lot of donations to the town, in some indirect and some direct financially. But I also wonder what kind of best practices and what kind of benchmarking that we can do. So there are communities with, you know, large hospitals or larger educational institutions, and I'd like us to understand what some of those other communities do as we embark on this endeavor, and I agree, we've been talking about this for years, you know, and it's going to be really hard. So we should be realistic in our approach, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't try, so it's a good part, a good start.
To your point, Wendy, it doesn't have to be always financial in some situations. Sometimes it's in-kind services that we can get and take advantage of too, and I think not all nonprofits are created equal, right? They all are different, some have a better donation base than others, so, you know, I think that has to be taken into consideration. I think that's some of the points that we should outline in the policy, in identifying some of those, the one-offs and so forth.
Yep, they're each going to be one-offs, but I appreciate that we're taking this on, it's an important one for the town. Thank you.
Okay, FinCom question, starting with Lois on this side.
Okay, two questions. One, I'm looking at the Brookline agreement, and it, towards the end, it looks like it talks about suggesting that a pilot agreement of less than, about 25% of the full levy for nonprofits, somewhat less for smaller, community-based. Have you done any numerical calculations, what is, if we had 25% of the levy, 20% of the assessment, what that number would be, what that number would come into the general fund?
No, because this was work for Brookline, and while we have to do our own assessment, I'm not sure that 25% is the right number. So I think that further analysis has to be done, and that would be part of the review of the creation of the policy.
Okay, next question, why'd you pick Brookline? Of all the towns in Massachusetts, why Brookline?
Because I spent most of my municipal career in Brookline, so I spent 14 years, and my mentor was Steve Cirillo, who was the Finance Director, and he is the, I always tell him, he's the self-proclaimed king of pilots in Massachusetts.
Oh, is he?
But I did reach out to Steve, and he's still a very good friend and somebody who, that I can rely upon to get best practice and best information from.
Last question I have is, in addition to pilots, did you actually look at nonprofits who rent property from the town, and whether or not those rental agreements could be changed to increase the rental amounts?
So yes, as they come up, and one has come up without mentioning the address, and I think that's where some of the conversations, I think, that the town needs to have with some of these buildings that the town owns, that are on any radar for any capital improvements that may need to happen. And while some of them, nonprofits that are renting our facilities, may have the ability to do upkeep to buildings, there's others that, you know, looking at, and the only thing that I have available to me is that there are 990s federal forms online, you know, I question whether or not they could maintain those buildings in the long term, so I think it's something that we have to be recognized, and we just can't turn a blind eye to something that is a potential liability for the town going forward. So maybe that's part of the whole discussion when Mary brought up earlier with town-owned property and looking at that. At some point, you know, Peabody School was mentioned, you know, does it make sense to, you know, sell that, throw that into a capital stabilization or a debt stabilization, where especially you know that you're going to have facility projects that are coming down the road with public works and a public safety building? So I think that planning like, prudent furniture planning would put this town in a better situation moving forward and not just get hit with a big project and ask the taxpayers for that exclusion to build a building.
Anthony, I'm very in favor of pilot, okay, completely, and I don't know if you've had the time, or if you even have the records, to look back at the history of this town with pilot, because I can recall vaguely, when I was on the board of Neshoba Brooks, that pilot was paid. So to your point that it's going to take some time, yes, I agree, but I think if we're armed with some of the history, Neshoba and Fenn too, I believe, did pilot. I don't think the other two large institutions, high school institutions in town, were part of that, but it might ease the conversation.
Yeah, thanks, Pat. The one that I'm familiar with that actually just came up today was the Housing Authority has a pilot that the Select Board entered into in September of '23, I believe, and then the state also, we have a pilot that's not formalized, to my knowledge, in a contract, but that's a state-owned land, so we get down to Cherry Street, Cherry Sheets. Those are the two that I'm aware of, but I haven't done a deep dive into them.
Just one second, I was, yeah, I go back a long time, like you, Terry, and Wendy was on the board of Select when we started out on a pilot, we had a pilot study committee, et cetera, this back in '03 and '08. Our first target was, of course, the educational facilities, and you expect to get a list of the number of Concord students those schools are educating before you even start the discussion, so that's a key component.
Just piggybacking on the schools, does the town have the ability to reevaluate their status? I don't know how that works. Can you go back and say you're no longer a nonprofit for whatever these reasons are, and start hitting them up for taxes on all the land that they own?
I would assume that's something that the assessors would go through on a periodic basis, right?
Right, they're supposed to file a statement with the assessors on nonprofit status, and usually that happens. I'd have to follow up on that, Joe. I'm just curious, does the town have any power to do it versus, you know, a pilot? Can we go in and just say, hey, you're a very wealthy institution, taking up a lot of land and a lot of resources, so let's now make you carry your full freight? I'm just asking if the town has that power, or does it reside somewhere else?
So I think through the process the assessors go through, they, there's paperwork that needs to be filed, probably, I don't know if it's on an annual basis for that type of institution, but yes, that would be through the assessor's office.
Wendy? Dean?
Pass.
Okay.
So Anthony, what do you think next steps could be? Do you think you could get us something that we could look at as something that we could adopt as a policy? Because I think we start with policy.
So, yeah, so Carrie and I were having a discussion today, and one of the things that we threw around as an idea is maybe having one Select Board member, maybe one FinCom work alongside us, because I think it's important that, you know, once a policy developed, that they know that both committees took part in creation of the document and then support it too. So I don't know how you feel about that, but, you know, certainly we can go back and work on it, but I think having some of the information I heard here about some of the nonprofits and maybe the size of them, that Wendy brought it up earlier, we don't have much institutional knowledge with a lot of new staff, and I think that we would, you know, it would be wise of us to get some institutional knowledge from the residents.
What do you think, Eric?
I think that makes sense. We already have some interest on the Finance Committee.
So Wendy, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to mention, in terms of coming up with the history, I seem to recall, and I don't know the details, that certain pieces of pretty expensive public safety equipment were donated by some of the institutions in the past, and so it'd be, the Fire Department, I think, is probably well aware of where those things came from and who provided that support, but that would be an important thing to also understand before, just, people have long memories here.
Yeah, that's rather uncommon, Mark. So the community I was in, in the North Shore, that college, we were able to have the buys of lease cruiser. But, you know, I think having a policy and going through the Select Boards doesn't allow the departments to go out and try to solicit their own, you know, benefits from these implications. So I think that formal process takes that away and puts everybody in a playing field for departments.
But back to Mary's suggestion, I think it does make, I think it does make some sense to sort of try to understand where the history's been, what the options are, and then take a look at that in context and then begin.
And also, I agree with Peggy, we need to have some data on how many students from there are we educating, how many public safety calls do we do on average per year, does DPW go down there and repair anything, or?
Okay, so I'm a little confused right now, because it feels like we're thinking, we're trying to decide, should we do this or not, because we want to know, how many kids do we educate?
No, 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 no.
Or have we decided that we are going to pursue this, and we're getting this data for what reason?
Well, so, communities that have been successful at this, and Anthony can tell me whether the king of pilots would agree with me here, have done this in the context of a well-established relationship between the boards, and, you know, the boards of the not-for-profits institutions, and in the context of a decent, of a well-thought-out policy about the basis. And that does recognize that these are bilateral relationships. You need to be prepared for the fact that when you make a call on the leader of one of these institutions, we can expect a laundry list of things like cell phone service, road maintenance, water resources, restrictions on permits for the development, and all of those kinds of things, because it's a conversation, and it is a negotiation.
It's a negotiation, so you want to go in there and know.
You need to know where you're coming from and what's on the other side.
Just to expand on Mark, yes, you're absolutely right. I think the policy's the first part, but before we even go into an organization to talk about a pilot, we have to be with the data that we know, with the services that we provide, and really quantify all of that for them. So that's something that we would do, that homework would be done before we even start going into an organization to talk about negotiating.
Right, I understand, okay, okay. So, but even before that, do we have a policy where we want to pursue this, and I see what you're saying now, Mark, would be part of the negotiation, the process? Earlier you said, is there a policy, we talked about policy, process, right? So I'm starting with, what's our policy? And then the process would be getting this data so that we're informed when we sit down with them, and then it would be actually, do we implement it? So I'm backing up to the policy.
Right, so I think Anthony was saying that to develop the policy, he would like to have one Select Board and one FinCom.
Okay, I'll volunteer. Do you want to ask for volunteers? I'd like to get this going.
Here, we have a volunteer in Lois.
Great, great, okay, good, good, okay, so we'll be attached.
We'll be attached.
Thank you, wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two down, two to go.
Thank you. I'm going to skip ahead to the capital process, because I think we can knock that off pretty quickly, and then we'll circle back to the town-owned properties. So the capital process, I really, what we envisioned doing, Eric, you and I, was to define what fits into Tier 1, 2, and 3, and how they would be handled during the budget process, right? So if we start with, let's start at Tier 3. So Tier 3 would be any project that's over $2 million, right? I thought it was 2.
What exists right now? Five.
So it is 5.
It is 5.
Okay, got that wrong.
But can I ask, Carrie, did you meet today with Lori? Because that was under discussion, whether it's going to be changed?
Yeah, so I was asked earlier in the summer to meet with Dr. Hunter and just talk through the tiering.
Okay.
And, yeah, so we were able to have our first meeting today, we're going to have another meeting in two weeks. Anthony and I met with Dr. Hunter and Bob Conry, and we had a good discussion and came up with a tentative... and we had a good discussion and came up with a tentative slight re-tiering that we're going to go back in and think about how that, how that might impact capital.
So, we're not ready to have this conversation here?
Not yet, but we, I, I think we were under the impression we were going to do something, have something ready for August, and so.
That's right.
What, what we're looking to do is to have a proposal that we think works for everybody and one that everybody can commit to, and then see, take, take that back to School Committee, Select Board, Finance Committee, see if we can get some agreement. So, the, the issues really are, the tiering as it, as it exists, it's very hard to, to make that fit within our existing financial policies and,
Just the dollar amounts?
Yeah, the, the dollar amounts, the Tier Three, for instance, it's just too high. Our annual capital plan is $5 million at best. So, to say one project up to $5 million can, can be considered in that tier, it, it just doesn't work. And then there's differences between the town capital and the, and the school capital, even on, on the lower ends, where we have a lot of vehicles and, and equipment, and the school has, you know, a lot of their, their building needs are big dollar. And so, we're just trying to figure out how, how we can make something work to optimize the funding that we have and recognizing the differences.
So, I guess we're not going to do this tonight? Okay, fine.
So, just though, for clarity, it's just, you're talking about the tier levels. Is there anything else that's about the process that we're?
That's a good point.
I don't know.
The, I think the only other thing that, that came up is the Finance Committee in this past process was interested in looking at Tier,
Tier One.
Tier One.
Tier One.
Tier, Tier One, which we hadn't brought through that same process. And, and so, we're talking about that as well.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We, we talked about this a bit at our last meeting in the context of the guidelines process. We've, historically, in recent history, Tier One has been treated differently between the town and the schools. And that, we set a goal for this year to, to, to change and treat them the same for guideline-setting purposes.
Okay, so let me be clear. So, what that means is that Tier One would be included in the guideline budgets, but it would be called out as a separate, we'd have visibility to it, but it would be included in the guideline number. Is that what I, do I understand this correctly?
There's two, there's two options, and Lindsay, please, please speak to this if you'd like. There's two options, you include it in both, or you exclude it in both.
Okay.
You exclude it from both. And that, that, we, we previewed that discussion at our last meeting as we laid out the guideline process.
The issue is right now that they're treated differently.
Right.
And so, it, it distorts the numbers.
Right.
And so, that, we, we would like guidance on that from the people who are actually making these recommendations. You and Lori Hunter in your meetings will tell us what works best. We're asking you to come up with a consistent way of handling this across the two budgeting entities.
And related to that is, once the Tier One budget, the Tier One capital project expenses is also expected to be expended or included in the operating budget and coming from cash, not borrowing, where the Tier Two has traditionally been borrowing within the levy limit, where Tier Three is, tends to be excluded from the levy limit. So, it does imply something about exactly how things are being paid for.
Right, absolutely.
And we, we were, I think that the, I, I wasn't listening to your discussion, but I'm assuming that you're also looking for not only consistency and definition of what, what the cutoffs are, but also how that funding is in fact being handled in the budgeting.
Exactly. I don't think the way it's funded is changing. And I don't think that's up for discussion. I think what, what is up for discussion is how it's budgeted in or outside of the guideline.
Right.
And, and how do we make sure that we have visibility to it? So, the town every year gives us very good visibility to the Tier One spending, the cash capital. And I think it would be helpful if we knew also from the schools what they're also spending for Tier One capital. Now, whether that's inside or outside the guideline, I guess, is still an open question.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
And then, I think the only other thing that might come up is which meetings we have. And I know the Finance Committee meeting is going to be the early December, and then there's, I think, a joint, on, on that calendar, there's a joint meeting between the Select Board and the School Committee in the middle of December. But in previous years, before this went to the Finance Committee, we had a brief joint meeting between the School Committee and the Select Board just to get all the ground rules in agreement. I see people nodding there, like, just, you know, this is what Tier One, Two, and Three are, this is what's in guideline, these are when our meetings are, you know, this, and, and actually a draft, draft capital plan. So, I guess, is, is this what you're thinking also, Eric and Carrie, that, you know, in October or something, we'll probably do that?
We, we, on the, in our schedule for the year, we're holding time in early December for our capital forum. There's nothing magic about that date, we just wanted to get something on the schedule.
Wait, I see, Carrie's going to hear that. Carrie, go ahead.
Hi, thanks, Carrie Rankin, 95 Upland Road, member of the School Committee, Chair of CPS. We are very amenable to having a conversation about capital. We fully understand and agree that there need to be kind of some process that we all can commit to and agree to. And we have, we've had conversations as a committee at this, about this as well. So, we would be very open to having that conversation, and we would love to have a seat at the table as that is being discussed. Because I think there is quite a bit of visibility into the, the way that we spend capital dollars currently. But I fundamentally agree with you that it's not consistent across the different departments and agencies. So, we would love that, we would love to have that conversation. December, obviously, is too late, I think, to start that, unless we're pushing this to next year, much like, because we got into that problem last year with pushing these conversations too late. So, I think if we're going to do it, sooner would be better.
Yes, I agree. That's why I was hoping, I know we were going to meet sometime this week.
Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping that we would have that conversation in August, actually.
Yeah, I mean, let's talk about it, let's talk about it.
Okay, okay.
And the other, the other comment I just wanted to make is that I know, Carrie, that you met with Dr. Hunter today. I think that was, it sounded like from our, our perspective, it was a very collaborative, productive conversation. And I just want to thank you for having that meeting and also for opening it, opening up that conversation because we'd like to continue the dialogue.
Great, thank you. Good, okay, so we're off to a good start.
I just have a question about that. So, it seems like in August, we would meet and, and agree on the process.
Yes.
And then, the next meeting maybe is not until December with FinCom? And I'm just wondering if we should go back to what we did a few years ago, which we had a very brief joint meeting, Select Board and School Committee, in October, September or October, where the initial draft is laid out by Dr. Hunter and Carrie, and just, we look at the initial draft.
The actual numbers.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that when it goes to FinCom, now you have a basis, you're not seeing it cold. So, I'm, I'm hoping we can do that again.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, so, August, we'll meet in August and talk about the process, and then we'll talk then about when we would actually have our first look at the numbers for FY '26.
Great.
Okay.
Let's talk in greater detail on Thursday. And then, obviously, I don't know if we have a quorum for August, so we have to figure that aspect of it out, but we can certainly start to piece it together.
I hope so.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to, we're done with that, are we done with that? Let's circle back to town-owned properties. Megan? Wake up, Megan.
Hi, thank you. In your packet, there is a rainbow spreadsheet of town property. And I took the list that we have that, from our insurance, that these are the properties that the town has policies on, and tried to break them out into some different categories. I think I got a couple of them wrong. In reviewing, I see that the Hunt Gym Outdoor Pool and Shed got put into the storage category because it was all mixed together. That was not intentional to our recreation friends that are here. That would be under our active town office and facilities section. I listed three properties in transition. The PBD Middle School will no longer be used for the, for that purpose once the new school is online. We have a historic house at 249 Harrington Avenue. That property had been leased to residential tenants in the past, but it has been vacant for about two years. And so, you know, that use is, I'd say, kind of in transition. And then, finally, we have at 51 Walden, the Friends of Performing Arts in Concord. That is in a current RFP process. The last long-term lease, which was 10 years, has just expired, and we're working towards doing a new, a new RFP process for selected use that will be, that's still in development right now. So, that's all I have, Mary. Happy to, you know, answer any questions. The, the purpose of this was to put everything in one list, and so, so folks can see some of the different categories. We, you know, of course, have some, a number of wells and pump stations, but we have some agricultural property and, you know, a number of, of storage buildings.
Sorry, is the 51 Walden just to, to re-lease it, or what, what is the RFP for?
The 51 Walden, we have done a, a request for proposals for a performing arts use, and so, we are, we're in the process of evaluating the proposals, and we'll plan to, our plan right now is to enter into a new lease with a successful proposer. But we're just in the middle of that right now, so.
Can I ask just a quick question? I didn't see Emerson Umbrella, does the town not own that?
We do own that.
Yeah, I, I just, maybe I missed it.
No, same question.
We, we do own it, it is under a 99-year lease, and maybe it's not on our insurance and that's why.
Maybe not insured yet.
Yeah.
Really? I'll double-check that, good catch, thank you. This was just structures.
And then, Megan, and I don't know why the School Committee here do, the restroom facility at CCRSD, we don't really have one, do we?
So, that's, um, this was on our list, and I, I need to, I need to follow up with it, but it, 500 Walden, the, and some of the, some of the terms are not exactly how.
Up with the upper field.
Oh, there's an actual, oh, yeah, right, it's like a shed, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
A building.
Okay, it's on the white, it's on Doug White Field. Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, that's what it is, okay, that makes sense.
Well, actually, I don't understand about that then. So, do the town owns that restroom facility, or CCRSD owns it?
The town.
Oh.
Because it's Doug White.
Because it's Doug White.
Because it's Doug White.
Okay.
Okay.
Good to know.
Okay.
Good to know, okay.
Also, in the previous discussion, it was mentioned that we had some property that some other institutions were renting. Are those on this list? Because I wasn't familiar with what properties they were talking about, actually.
Emerson.
Well, Emerson, right, but what about? That's it?
Yeah.
So, we're not talking about the hospital or the private schools renting any property then, from the town? It's only those two properties, Umbrella and 51 Walden?
I, on this list, I just listed the, the structures that are currently owned by the town that are on our insurance. So, so, your question, does this list include properties that are, I'm sorry?
If we were the landlord and someone was renting, it would have to be on the insurance. So, I guess that answers it, okay, thanks.
On the substations, Substation 479 was decommissioned a number of years ago, and so, it might be worth checking in with CMLP, but that might make your criteria as being a property in transition, unless they've come up with a new use for it.
Just to back up a minute, the, the reason we have this list is, I think, twofold. Number one, when we were thinking of revenue opportunities for the town, we were looking at, do we have any property that maybe the town shouldn't own anymore? Is there a better way to have the property maintained or preserved? That would be by a private party instead of the town. And the other thing, it was, it was a beginning for the matrix that we talked about earlier when we talked about our goals. What are the properties that we already have, and what are some of the uses? So, that was the genesis of why we put this together. So, the properties in transition, the PBD Middle School, we know that's in play as far as what, you know, as far as the matrix goes. The historic house at 249 Harrington, I don't know if people are familiar with that, but Megan told us about it, it was rented for a while. It's a beautiful house, it's historic house, and it's been neglected for years. So, one of the things that we've been floating around is, maybe the right thing to do would be to look for a private party who would be willing to restore it. And that way, we would, we might get some proceeds for the town. I mean, it is, it is a beautiful piece of property. I don't know what its assessed value is, but we'd, it would be a two, it would be, we'd also get some money for the town. We wouldn't have to feel guilty about not maintaining it, and it would be turned into really a stunning piece of property in the town. So, that was one of the reasons why we have this on the list.
The town could do to protect it as far as its historical value before you know, if you ever decided to sell that.
Right, right. I think, I think actually, Megan, you've got some information about that. It does have some designation, but I'm not an expert on how restrictive that is. So, I don't, I don't really know. But, so that's some of the research.
Yes, we, I'm still researching this one, but the, the property around it is natural, owned by Natural Resources too. So, that's just something to think about.
That's right.
But the, the home itself is in consultation with the Historical Commission, but under the town manager.
Right, so, something we've been thinking about. Did you have something to say, Julie?
Well, first of all, I'm Julie Viola, I'm a Carlisle resident, but I am the Chair of the, the new Chair of the CCHS School Committee. So, just a couple of comments on the list, because if you're saying that the list is pulled from insurance, the Doug White Fields are not on there?
Good point.
So, we do need to have a handle on that. It's just structural? Okay, and then the bathrooms, just wanted to reiterate that. And then, just because I'm here, and I hear what you said, I would just, if you don't already engage with the trustees who own the Old Mants, they've been wonderful partners in previous towns that I've been a part of for historical homes like that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I would just say, I mean, I, we, you requested this list in the context of considering potential revenue opportunities.
That's right.
Could we also look at this through the lens of sites for potential future capital needs? I know we're, we've still got the public safety facility on the long-term radar, DPW. I don't think, I don't know that we'd consider putting DPW to historic property, but, it's just another, another lens to be looking at this list through.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Any other comments? Eric, are we good? Okay.
Well, what, what do we want to do with this list next? Because I thought we were going to try to start evolving toward a land use plan.
Yep.
And this looks like a really good start.
It is.
So what would our next step be?
That would be up to, I think, the work that Megan started around the land use matrix, looking at what we have, what we need, and trying to find matches.
Okay, so that's a separate one from this. It's more got the fields and the trails and?
No, I think it was really just, we were looking at facilities.
So, okay, I'm confused.
Okay.
He said Megan's got a list of.
I think this is our list.
Right, so what is the next step then?
Megan, do you want to take?
Sure, I'm, I'm trying to work on a matrix or a spreadsheet, and, and really, it's, it's just a few properties that we're talking about. We did a capital or facilities needs study in 2020, which did an assessment of all the town facilities and their current conditions, if they're meeting the program, if they need renovations to meet the program, or, you know, space constraints and things like that, which has been very helpful. It led to some improvements in town. It led to the renovation of this, this, behind this wall here, where some additional office space was created, and, you know, it's, it's been helpful in, in large document. And through that, it's very clear that two of our departments, or three of our departments really, are in spaces that are not meeting the programs, and that's our public safety building and our Concord Public Works. And for our public safety building, there, some of the concerns there, there wouldn't even be ability to expand because of the environmental constraints on the site, and so they really need additional space to fulfill their program appropriately, based on the study. The second one is Concord Public Works. They're located at Kaiz Road. They, Kaiz Road itself is nine acres, I believe. It also is a home to planning, natural resources, public health, and building department, divisions. The whole campus is nine acres, and Concord Public Works would require 13, based on this 2020 study, to appropriately house the materials, the offices, the, the vehicles appropriately. So even if they were to have that whole site there, it's too tight from, from what we learned a couple of years ago. So I'm, you know, when I'm, you know, this matrix is, is really just a few lines of like, really, what are the, what are the, the areas that need new space and what spaces are potentially available? So this doesn't capture all the spaces that are potentially available, but we have mentioned some others tonight, which is, we have a few different committees looking at 2229 Main Street. We have a committee looking at MCI. Both of those are not owned by the town of Concord right now, and there, there are these committees that are looking at what, how we should pursue, if we should pursue or consider those properties as part of our town, and to meet some of our needs. So I, I think, I think really where I am, and I've been kind of mulling this over and trying to work on it, and it's, we're just trying to think about what, what properties that we know about or that maybe could come online that probably at this point, we wouldn't be talking about in a public meeting because we'd be considering, just considering those properties, what could help us meet our needs in, in this community, and so that, that's something I am working on, and those are the two areas that are really the focus at this time.
Mary, one other thing, just to add, what we're, finance department's doing through the assessors' office, too, is looking at town-owned land and buildings to, to update the value, because this is something that we, we generally don't prioritize, updating the values, but I think it's important at this point, if you're going to have any type of discussions, that you know, oh, we have updated values of those properties.
Great, very good. Good. That's helpful. Okay. I want to thank the FinCom for coming here tonight with us, really, I really do. It's late, we've talked about a lot of different things. It's a far-ranging conversation, but it's always good to talk together and kind of understand what we're struck, what we're working on. So Eric, do you want to adjourn your meeting?
Sure, I'll instant in a motion to adjourn the FinCom.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, FinCom is adjourned.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's my job. I love this team.